So, we're gonna get started. Thank you all very much for being here. Is everyone ready? Welcome to the Monday, June 24th, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. Will everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, thank you all very much for being here. I'd make notice that the board met in executive session to discuss matters of real estate this evening and legal issues. Consent agenda. First, I'd like to welcome Molly Gallagher, who is our new Public Information Officer for the township. So, welcome to your first meeting. Okay. Anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes. I'd like to pull item E. And also, we're pulling item F, didn't we say? Bob say?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Item F will be struck. We are not discussing that, so that will be removed.
And I, J, K, L. I was going to only do K and L, but I want to get some clarity, at least on the other ones. So, I, J, K, L.
Okay. Anything anyone else would like to pull? Okay, and I am going to pull... Oh, you already pulled it. All right. Is there anything the staff would like to pull besides item F? Is there anything the public would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? All right, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item E, F, I, J, K, and L?
So moved.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus items E, F, I, J, K, and L? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. All right, item E, Commissioner Booker.
Item E is Resolution 2019-62, amending the wage and salary schedule to include a part-time civilian position to the Police Department. Looking for more background information on this. I was not familiar, or I don't recall talking about this before.
The Police Department met with the township manager and assistant township manager. In the past, we had four administrative staff with changing of duties and other things. We went down to two. One of the open jobs that was downstairs for the detective unit was the performance of several duties, such as fingerprinting, case file management, expungements, working with the youth aid panel, and I could keep going on, on several different functions, and one of the biggest ones being evidence management. Currently, right now, after the loss of that, our Radnor detectives actively handle all those administrative functions. My request to the manager was to be able to hire a part-time person to alleviate those daily duties, sometimes monthly duties, and some of them are very labor-intensive, such as the expungements, where you have to go through several different case files. Those duties would be assigned to this temporary position to allow us more efficiencies with the detectives.
So, if the detectives had some assistance, why was it taken away from them?
I know Commissioner Booker, you're always looking to reduce staff within the Police Department.
So, that was... You following my recommendation?
No. So, what we were actually doing here as part of this is what Chris had asked for. Instead of, in the interim, since we do not have an active list for patrol officer, that in the interim here basis, that we utilize this part-time person to get caught up in some of these particular area. As you're aware, the detectives have a very busy caseload, in which they've been very successful in solving a lot of the issues within the township here. So, I think I want to commend Chris for coming up with the idea here, is where we can actually utilize to get caught up in a lot of this work that is necessary, that needs to get done without coming to the board and asking for a full-time position.
I guess I understand that, but the detectives are a very important part of the police force, and I know we did some restructuring, but I'm surprised to hear that we would have reduced the administrative staff for the detectives while continuing administrative staffing for other areas of the police force. So, interested to know what precipitated that change, but what I recommend is we go back to having the detectives be served by the people that we do have, and look to see in the other areas where we could make up for the downsizing, which I think was probably appropriate.
Just to answer that, about nine years ago, we had five administrative staff, which is in there, it was down to two, and those two are doing a tremendous job. The philosophy is to put more men and women on the streets and not be tied up with simple administrative chores, which can be handled by civilians. So, it's utilizing the force more efficiently than actually utilizing full-time officers to be able to handle part-time duties that are dealt with filing and those types of things, which I don't think is the efficient use of taxpayers' dollars.
I guess it sounds like what you're saying is that you relieved the regular patrol officers of some of their administrative duties, and you took from the detectives their administrative. I commend the reduction in the staff. I don't think you need a part-time person. Once you put a part-time, once you put another person on the payroll, that person never goes away. It's going to be at least $150,000 a year forever, and I recommend that we make do. We went to two. I think that was a good move with computers and other areas of efficiencies that we have today, that we should be able to make up for it. So, I would say that we don't need to have another part-time person at this point.
Madam President, if I may? Just on that issue. You know, for people who want to walk in and just have fingerprints done, I don't think we need a full-time police officer or detective to handle those duties. Their professionalism, their training puts them in another place to be able to do that. But I do like where Commissioner Booker may be looking for us adding full-time police officers. I'd be more than happy to add more full-time police officers.
Well, Bob, we added five full-time police officers already this year, and that's about a million dollars a year that we put back into the budget.
Just for clarity, that is filling positions that were not filled, so that is not true. That is completely false.
Gentlemen, can I ask a question? May I ask a question? I had a question, and I was going to pull this as well, not for the same reason that Commissioner Booker pulled it, but in the justification, you know, as to why, I noted that there is a full-time position open, and that this would fill that in half, so that it would be, you know, net positive to the township, but my question is, do we need an officer? Do we need to...
Well, we do not have a current list, so we'll be in the process of getting a new list for patrol officers. So, the intention is later this year, early next year, we will have that. Part of that part-time person will be doing is assisting the Civil Service Commission as well, and getting that test together, and there are a lot of responsibilities administratively that take place during that testing process, that this part-time person will be taking advantage of. So, again, I commend Chris and his staff for looking at ways to be efficient in their operations.
I certainly don't need to question that at all. I just didn't know if we would rather have an officer, so, but whatever. You know, Chris, whatever you're deciding, so. Is there any other Commissioner comment to this item? Any other staff comment? Is there any public comment on the item? All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of item E, Resolution 2019-62, amending the 2019 wage and salary schedule to include a part-time civilian position in the Police Department, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to one with Commissioner Clark absent. Onto item I, Commissioner Booker. And can we perhaps do I and J together?
Yeah, both of these seem to me to be handled under Community Development, so I don't know why they're under Consent Agenda. That's my question. Why wouldn't we have these under our regular agenda?
Madam President, if I may? Being at the last meeting, we had residents and their consultants sit for approximately five and a half, six hours, and the conversation lasted approximately a minute to two. So, to expedite, because you do have a heavy agenda here, my guess is that the last meeting the board would have worked on most of the concerns that they had at that time, and this is now the final approvals. So, to move the meeting along more efficiently, it was added here.
And the manager suggested that, and I wholeheartedly supported it, so... Do you have any questions with regards to the items?
Yeah, I think that for these plans, that we should have the applicants come up. They should show the plans. Public needs to see what we're approving, and Consent Agenda is not a place for Community Development. This is a final plan, and should get a regular vote and a regular review, two reviews for the public. So, I disagree with putting this in the Consent Agenda, and feel that's inappropriate.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comment to items I and J?
Well, if we're going to do the review now, let's have the applicants come up and show the plan, and let's go through them.
Commissioner, if I may? So, Ms. Rousher for 360 Conestoga Road had a family emergency. She will be here approximately 7:30, so we could move through with 501 South Ithian Avenue, very minor project. I'm not sure the applicant is here either yet. I think they were basing it off last week's meeting. 501 Ithian Avenue is a very minor project, so one property on Brandon Mead, 528 Brandon Mead, is conveying a small portion of the lot to 501 South Ithian. I don't see the applicant here. This was reviewed last month, or last meeting. The only waiver being requested is on the mapping waiver, which is pretty standard, and it's a, the existing non-conformity would stand. I don't know if you wish to wait for the applicant, or if he will even be here. I have not heard from him.
Well, if we have a waiver, we have non-conformity continuing. We should go through that at the regular location in the meeting, and so this is not the place for a consent. The Consent Agenda should be for regular recurring items that are of administrative nature, that don't require regular review. That is not the case with any sub-final subdivision or land development plans.
Madam President, if I may? Just on that item, if that was the case, Commissioner, you would have given more than one or two minutes at the last meeting. I don't think it's fair for someone to sit five and a half, six hours through something that if it was that critical, should have been discussed at that time, and it wasn't, and the board just moved it through within one to two minutes.
It was probably after midnight, when we, remember, we want hours on other items, so if we have too much on the agenda, let's make the agenda smaller, so that we can get done by 11 o'clock, and if that means we take a little longer than we should, putting it in Consent Agenda and blowing through and not doing a correct review is not the way to handle. This is not a Consent Agenda item. Subdivision, land development, final approvals is not a Consent Agenda item.
Can I ask why that was not discussed at the last meeting?
Okay, gentlemen.
Madam President, if I may ask, he makes a claim there. I'd just like to have his answer, why he didn't raise these questions at the last meeting to the applicant and to the residents that sat here this long.
Okay, may I ask, is there any other, do I have consensus from anyone else who feels like this should be relocated to later in the agenda?
Madam President, I'm sorry. Andy Eberwine is here for 360. The owner is not, but the engineer is here, if you wish to go through that at this time.
Certainly.
Mr. Eberwine?
I'm sorry, and this one is 360 Conestoga? Okay.
So, I'm Andy Eberwine from Edward B. Washington Associates. We're representing Mrs. Rousher on the subdivision. She's the owner of the property. She's been there for over 10 years. She wishes to subdivide the property, maintaining her existing house, pool, and the like, and providing for a new lot with 23,340 square feet. It'll be served by public water, public sewer. There is no improvements proposed at all at this time for this property. She's not sure if she's going to just keep it and hold on to it at this time, sell it or not. It's not on the market. It's not planned on being in the market anytime soon, and as far as I know, she has no intention of improving it at this time. She just would like to subdivide it within her rights. We are asking for one waiver on this, and this is the provision of the information for all the other properties, 300 feet within the boundary of the subdivision. It was pretty standard. We were, because it's a minor subdivision, and there are no improvements at the time, it was felt and endorsed by the engineer that this would be an acceptable waiver. It's a pretty standard waiver for something this small. All the other items, as far as having to obtain a Penn dot permit, we do have to obtain a Penn dot permit for when a house gets constructed on the property on Lot 2. The existing driveway for Lot 1 will remain. There is an existing permit for that. There will be some trimming of the trees along Conestoga Road. Excuse me, let me get the pointer, so I can keep doing this. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. That makes it a lot easier. Thank you. So, the existing driveway will remain. There'll be some vegetation pruning along the northeastern, northwestern side of the roadway, so that we can improve the site distance at the existing driveway. That was a recommendation of your consultant, and we think it's a good one, so we will do that. As far as the other items, we have to get a planning module waiver extension. That's in the process. It doesn't happen until after this happens, so nothing will happen on that till we do obtain that. Other than that, we believe we are in conformance with your code and request that you approve the subdivision.
Okay, any questions?
Why not provide an aerial of all of the nearby properties? If you're not going to show, so what's the, the waiver is, you have to have shown all properties and topographic data for all properties within 500 feet? Is that what they?
Yes.
And you're not showing us anything, though. How about an aerial? What are the neighbors? Have you talked to the neighbors?
The neighbors were all notified by notices, requirement of your ordinance. They were at the Planning Commission. We had discussions with them. They were all put on notice, and there were neighbors here when we went through the Planning Commission.
And this was approved by planning?
It was.
Is there, but there's no aerial or even anything at all? Anything, what's on either side of the property? Is it all residential? What's in this area? Is it commercial at all, or?
No, they're both, it's residential on both sides, and behind it is the trail.
And where would the new curb cut go for the new property?
Actually, I would believe that it would go somewhere in this area here, just because of site distance requirements. We have to meet the Penn dot site distance requirements. We haven't measured it yet, but we have adequate frontage, or we could provide that along the frontage, and we try to put it where we can minimize removal of trees, and that when the, when it goes to be developed. I'm not sure, because we haven't totally looked at it, but that would be my recommendation, would be somewhere in this area.
Is there, what's the zoning in that for this property right here?
It's zoned R2.
R2? And have you verified you have enough space with exclusions for rights away, et cetera, to build within the limit lines that you have right there?
Yes.
Steve, isn't it a good idea to get them at least to do an aerial, so that we can do?
Commissioner, to that end, Mr. Eberwine, and maybe we could come to a middle. If you want to use a Google Earth or GIS map, overlay the parcels, sanitary sewer, storm sewer that you know, and submit that as part of that, I think that would be adequate, Commissioner?
We certainly, you know, it would be, I guess, a condition. I would ask you, make that a condition. We certainly will submit that and can submit that.
Would work for the Engineering Department, sir.
All right, I'll make that a condition.
Any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? I guess first I need to, we didn't make a resolution. So, may I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-57?
With the condition?
With the condition of overlaying the Google map?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Was there any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-57, 360 Conestoga Road, minor, final minor, final subdivision plan with a condition of a Google map overlay, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. Resolution 2019-58, thank you very much. Resolution 2019-58, 501 South Ithian, final minor subdivision plan. May I get a motion to approve?
No, I move that we defer and put it in the Community Development.
Madam President?
I pulled, I pulled it for that.
The applicant isn't here. I don't see that person. It would go under the Engineering group, but this is the conveyance of plus or minus 0.249 acres from 528 Brandon Mead to 501 South Ithian. Applicant requested the same waiver on the map with the 500-foot radius, and there's no improvements to it. It's still going to be a single home, and there is an existing non-conformity that the applicant wishes to continue. Again, I do not see the gentleman here. He was the gentleman that was here at the last meeting.
And he is coming, or?
As far as we knew.
Okay.
Let's defer this until Engineering.
All right, we can move that until, if we see him, Mr. Nocini, if you see him arrive, we'll try to move him, move through him, because they did wait a very long time.
Can we vote on it now?
Is there a second for that?
This is why we make meetings longer, right? So, now we have, now we have to talk about a motion to do...
I'm going to go ahead and say that we will wait for the gentleman to arrive, and we will discuss this as soon as he arrives.
Thank you.
All right?
K and L, 110 Harvard Lane, waiver of Section 245-22 of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. This one is a, another item that is, should be under Engineering, but we should have the, we should hear the engineer and go through this plan as well, or also defer this one.
Should we have Mr. Nocini introduce?
Madam President, so the engineer, and Patrick Spellman, and representative of Rockwell Homes is here. This whole development has been for waivers. The soils are not good for infiltration. In this case, they cannot meet our 0.5 inches per hour of infiltration testing due to the high water table. The applicant is proposing a rain garden to provide rate control and water quality requirements, and just to save time, it is a very similar situation for 104 Harvard Lane. In that case, the infiltration rates are 0.07 inches per hour, and they're going to provide two rain gardens. So, again, this development, they've been here before, the soils just are not infiltrating.
Okay, so, this is another case where we have a waiver being requested because the developer cannot meet the infiltration requirement for stormwater, which means the stormwater is going not into the ground to be absorbed and back into the water table, but out into our conveyance structures and adding and exacerbating the flooding that we have. And we've had it for everyone in this development, which sat for 30 years. I'm not sure why that was the case, but this development was on the books for decades, never developed, and now it's coming before us and is asking for a waiver from every stormwater requirement. We shouldn't waive these, the stormwater ordinance. However, since this board seems to want to grant these waivers in every single case where they've come, there's been 100 or more that have come since I've been on the Board of Commissioners. Everyone has gotten, nearly everyone has gotten the waiver from the infiltration. Why doesn't this board pursue eliminating the infiltration requirement from our ordinance, so that everyone can avail themselves of the benefit and be able to build without the hindrance of the stormwater ordinance? It's patently unfair to make some people conform to the stormwater ordinance and then to waive it for others, and, and I'm sure that someone will say, well, development improves the stormwater situation. Well, if it improves the stormwater situation, then why do we worry about the stormwater ordinance? Let's just give everybody this waiver, so that nobody has to conform with it, because it's improving things supposedly. So, I'll put that to you. Let's, we should deny this. This is exacerbating our stormwater problems, which we have $3.5 million that we've collected from this township to address stormwater. It's never, it's not being addressed. We're making it worse by granting waivers, so we shouldn't grant this. However, if you want to do it, then let's change the ordinance, so that everyone can avail themselves of this and not have to do the infiltration.
Mr. Nocini, this is not a waiver from the entire stormwater ordinance. This is just one small part.
When this occurs, our ordinance requires that the applicant must come before this Board of Commissioners to request a waiver. It can't be done at the staff level. It has to be done at the board level. That's why they are here at this time. I guess a couple of things to think of. So, since the ground isn't infiltrating, there probably wouldn't have been a lot of infiltration in its natural state, okay, from what it was. Again, this is our ordinance requires this request of this Board of Commissioners. That's why they're here. They're required to do so.
If we were going to change the ordinance at all, I'd recommend we change it to eliminate the requirement that you come to the board, and we allow engineers to approve it. And I challenge you on the number of 100 of these waivers, and you're also misinterpreting the regulation. We've said that before.
Okay, okay, we're not going to fight about this.
This does exacerbate stormwater problems. It does not infiltrate, and it's, if you want to give waivers to everybody who comes, then give the waiver to everyone.
Okay.
We should not, we should not make some people conform to the infiltration requirement spending tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then give others a waiver, and just say, okay, sorry, you don't need to worry about it. If it's important enough to have it be in the ordinance, you should require it, and I think that this township needs to have the infiltration requirement maintained because of the stormwater problems, which I'm constantly bombarded with, that we need to spend money to address stormwater for various places around. This is exacerbating our stormwater problems, and we should stop it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Booker. Is there anyone else who has anything to say with regards to this?
Well, I'm going to support this resolution, but I do agree with Commissioner Booker that in the future, I would like to see these not as part of the Consent Agenda.
Duly noted. Anyone else? Any staff comment?
Madam President, we're just awaiting on stormwater projects to be approved by the board. I believe we've had them for four or five years, so as soon as those projects are approved, we'd be more than happy to start them.
Thank you, Mr. Zinkowski. Any other staff comment? Is there any, well, first I need to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve 110 Harvard Lane, waiver of 245-22A to C2 of the Stormwater Ordinance, Stormwater Management Ordinance. All right. Would you like to speak, Ms. Morgan?
Yes, I would. On a holistic basis, sitting in meetings for eight years and about to do an addition myself, and I live in Ward 11, which is near Lancaster, a higher part of the township. We get no investment from the board into parks or trails in our area. We're sort of a food barren, or a food desert, or whatever you call it. We're a BOC-deprived desert. In fact, led by our own Commissioner, there was 1.2 million of already voted on, already allocated stormwater improvements into 111, and because a few of the neighbors complained, a few, it was taken away. And there was some discussion on a slightly smaller one, which all the neighbors were open to, but again, it was taken away. So, we lost 1.2 million. We get no money for trails and parks. I'm about to do an addition. I'm not sure how I'll perk. I may perk well, I may perk not, but if I perk, I'm going to have to put a lot of money into that part of the plan, which I'm not opposed to. But what I'm opposed to is the patent unfairness that there is, John, Commissioner Nagel, there is impervious addition being added down in the lower parts of Ward 1. Commissioner Larkin knows this to be true, in form of patios and building space, and they are getting accepted out of this stuff. That is unfair. So, what I propose is an ordinance change, and where we would have some of the engineering staff come in, assess what the true cost would be, as if they perked. They have to write a check, they have to put it into the stormwater fund if they want their addition. It should be fair economically. I don't think it's fair for somebody like me, who's probably going to perk. I'm pretty high up, and I don't think it's fair that we got money taken away from us. I actually came here to talk about smart government, which I will in a few minutes. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Is this regarding the motion that's on the floor, Tony? Is this regarding the motion?
Good evening, Board. This is, is this working?
Yeah.
This is a very smart and astute Board of Commissioners. So we have discussed ordinances to ban smoking at the parks. We have also talked about banning plastic bags. We should not grant waivers. We should think out of the box. This is 2019, the 21st century. We have all witnessed what has been going on in terms of storms. Just look at the Midwest. Look at Texas. Look all over the country. So this is something that is extremely important to us. What it looks like today will not look like this tomorrow. So to grant these waivers should not happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other public comment? All right, I'll call the vote on item K, 110 Harvard Lane, waiver of section 245-22A-2C2 of the stormwater management ordinance. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 42 with Commissioner Clark absent. Item L. Commissioner Booker.
This is the same situation where it's the same development, the same exact issue. And Leslie Morgan, I thank her for coming to the podium. That's a perfect situation. We have a homeowner who's doing an addition and will have to spend tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars because they have 800 square feet of impervious being added to the site. And then others have to spend little or nothing and request a waiver. And so it's patently unfair to begin with. But what's worse is that we add impervious on these sites, we add pavement, and we don't require that that stormwater that gets absorbed today goes back into the groundwater. And we give them a waiver. We exacerbate our stormwater problems. We have flooding problems. And we continue, and there's at least 100 that we've approved of these, and either we should, if we're going to give these waivers to everyone, then people like Leslie Morgan and others who come should not have to spend tens of thousands of dollars to infiltrate stormwater into the ground on their site when others don't have to do it and are allowed to exacerbate our stormwater flooding issue. So this is a proven documented issue. We continue to make stormwater worse by granting these waivers, and we should not do it. Or we should avail it, we should let everyone do it. So what I will ask is that for the next Board of Commissioners meeting, we have on an item to amend the stormwater ordinance to eliminate the infiltration requirement And for this immediate motion, I would recommend to this board, we vote no and do not approve the waiver.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment?
All right, can I get a motion to approve 104 Harvard Lane waiver of 245-22A-2C2 of the stormwater management ordinance?
Stormwater.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any more commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment?
Hello. I was not planning on saying anything about this, but so I'm Gretchen Grobel with the Radnor Conservancy. And come on, all of you up there, we have so many stormwater problems. How can we, how could this whole development been approved when there were, you know, someone must have done perk tests and known that there was no, you know, things weren't as they were. How can we grant a waiver and let this happen when our entire township has major stormwater problems? And there's a major run right through there, and it's just going to exacerbate. Are we thinking about who's downstream of this? It's foolish, foolish of us to approve this. We can't pull the wool over our eyes and like pretend that we don't have a major stormwater problem. You cannot, please don't allow this. It's crazy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Any other public comment?
Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of 104 Harvard Lane waiver of 245-22A-2C2 of the stormwater management ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 42.
I thank all the speakers.
Move on to-
Madam President, if I may, just on that, I understand the concern, but I believe this development was approved back in, Steve, maybe the 70s, I believe.
Late 70s, early 80s, which totally predated our stormwater management ordinance. There would have been no infiltration testing required. Back then, it was rate control at best.
Correct. And I think that's where some of the history comes into on this particular project, but also too is we're waiting on projects to be approved, but also though construction actually does improve stormwater management, so it will be better than what currently sits there today. That's fact. Thank you.
Well, then let's eliminate requirement for everybody.
Gentlemen, we have exhausted this topic.
You have my request, so it'll be in the minute, so we'll bring that for the next-
We heard your request, thank you.
So we'll have that for the board discussion.
I am calling for public participation now. We have people who have been waiting for a long time. Good evening.
Actually, we haven't been waiting that much today. Thank you for starting the meeting sort of on time. Leslie Morgan, Ward 1, Radnor Township. I think I've lived here for 17 years. I come and talk pretty consistently anytime you try and raise taxes or misallocate money or raise debt. So you're about, tonight, a lot of it's going to be centered around a $7.3 million bond issue. I think because of the lathering, you go a little above, but the number will be 7.3, I believe. And you have a list here, if we could, if somebody could put the spotlight on the list of proposed projects. I wanted to talk about, to remind you that I've come here before, I think I even came in January, and I suggested some unique ideas. And one of the ideas I want to reiterate, and one I want to reiterate from several years ago. The first one would be that you have a lot of trails again, money for trails. I think three or four years ago, we raised upwards of $10 million, the large part of that $10 million in bonding, which fomented a tax increase was for trails. I, at that time, and some others, did a study on our contiguous and competitor townships, and nobody had ever raised debt on a township level to build trails. You can, in Pennsylvania and in many states, go to your state and say, here's a trail project, do you like it? And they'll 100% fund it. Or you'll do it out of cash flow, too. John, not a fair to laugh. But nobody around us has raised debt for trails, and here we are doing it a second time because two of the trail projects, I guess, went over budget because it's partially included in 2015 and partially not. So that makes me smell like maybe there was an over-budget situation. Needless to say, you have a lot of trail money in here. And I have to say that the township has bigger problems than more trails, which means in the future, more maintenance, which means more money. So I always think that trails are great, but I think that there needs to be a private investment from the local people that want it so much. Secondly, and I think Booker and some predecessor people came up with this, and I know Commissioner Abel will fall out of his seat when I say this, but you could finance these trails from the cell towers because we now know that no neighborhoods want the cell towers down in the area where they're getting all this investment. They don't want it in their neighborhood, and I guess some don't want it in the park, but many people put them in the park and they disappear from your even thought. And these were rich numbers, and you could have capitalized them, sold the leases, I think it would have been $4, $5 million. But I don't think it's fair, again, coming from Ward 11, where we have a desert of funding, that all these people are getting the funding, yet they're not willing to negotiate and meet people in the middle to, and they're not willing to invest privately, as we found out with Ardrosen. So why? That's a mechanism that would be considered smart and progressive government, to take a funding mechanism and monetize part of your asset, which nobody would see, and it wouldn't foment probably another tax increase very soon. So that was one of my ideas. I wanted to call back to you, and if you've thought of that, I'd love to hear from any of you, if you even thought of anything besides a straight-line debt increase. It's pretty unprogressive, but we do have a majority of the board that is democratic. Secondly, I want to call to your attention that a lot of money is being put towards the Public Works Building. The Public Works Building has been studied in our inventory. We paid for two taxpayer studies out of a very swank consulting firm in Philadelphia, and each one, they say number one thing, sell the Public Works Building, monetize that, move it. Give a minute, Mr. Morgan. I'll wrap up. But you've heard my ideas on this, on the Public Works Building. There are people that would buy that. You could then create a taxable parcel, and it would pay for a lot of downtown escrow account. It's a very modern, progressive idea. And I keep thinking, why does this board not want to think out of the box? We're supposed to be smart in Radnor. Both Berwyn and TE is being smart. Both Lower Marion is being smart. They're bringing private dollars in, and we're the only ones that just keep going, let's raise debt because we have a majority vote. I mean, come on, guys, it's a little embarrassing. I'd like you to think about this in the next two weeks before you vote that debt increase in. And think if you can't, at least meet us in the middle and lead us into a smart, progressive deal-making structure in some of these ideas, because it's just not fair. It's just not fair to the taxpayer. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
Sarah Pilling, Garrett Avenue, wearing my Ready for 100 hat. I wanted to let you know that the second meeting of the Green Team to address the issue of efficiency and conservation in Radnor Township will be held tomorrow night, starting at 6:30 in the room outside of Bob Zankowski's office. Two of our members can't be there, so we're going to do a Zoom meeting for those two people, and there will be time for public comment, and we urge people to come to support us in making this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
Hi. I wanted to say thank you, first to the Board of Commissioners and everyone in the room, for trying hard to make the township a better place, especially the men and the women of the police department. Thank you so much for trying to keep us safe. And I wanted to bring issue with Commissioner Abel had brought up the idea of a camera at the intersection of Morris and Sugar Town Road. And those of us who live in the area would think that it was a really great idea in light of recent events there. I think anything that we can do to help the police department, especially cameras and provide evidence and provide pictures of people, you know, and kind of helping them solve crimes, they're doing their best, and we appreciate it so much. And we just wanted to come out, all the neighbors in the area around the Bo Connor Park, want to come out in support of that idea. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening?
Roberta asked, we have the last gentleman give his name and where he lives.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Dan Kaplan. I live on 100 Calvary Street. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Marielle Mannix. I live at 618 Kershaw Avenue. I've been here in Radnor about 17 years and there for 15. My voice is going to shake because I am so grateful for Radnor, first off. It means a great deal to us to be here. A lot of you know my family. We've been blessed with five kids. Four of them are, three have gone through the Radnor schools, one is going through it, and one isn't here and was never here. We moved here after we lost him. If, and I apologize, I'm kind of jumping because I can't be here all night. I've been up since 6:00, and I got to be in Harrisburg tomorrow at 7:00. But I do want to speak to your Willows lease, and I know you've seen me here before about it. I try not to be, and I can't be here as much as you guys have spent time talking about it. But I can say without a doubt that the research and the evidence that is out there from all the universities and hospitals and health cares, that you probably, somewhere along the line, you've probably heard this. Outdoor space, outdoor experiences improves health. Everything from the children's growing vision, literally, it improves their vision development. It reduces stress for everybody. And I know for me, in those early years recovering from our trauma, without the Willows and Skunk Hollow Trail and the amazing people that are here in Radnor, I would be, I wouldn't have been able to contain any of my sanity. I'd probably be all crazy, because I'm definitely crazy, and there are people here that can vouch for that. Right, Bill? But I have a little bit of sanity left, and I'm grateful to Radnor for that. The Willows, when I look through this lease, I'm literally like punched in the gut because what you do with that mansion, I'm not seeing anything in the lease that is actually protecting and being mindful of what is going to happen and who is going to keep control over that land that your predecessors purchased in 1973, I believe, for public use. So I have a couple of questions. You don't have to answer them. If you want to, great, but honestly, you don't have to answer them, but people know where to reach me. Have you heard of Fridays for the Future? And I'm going to throw out here, if you haven't heard about Fridays for the Future, hear about it. Right here. Fridays for the Future started with a very young girl, and it is taking the world. Have you reached out or talked to the Natural Lands Trust? Are you familiar with how much land they are purchasing throughout Pennsylvania to preserve it for the use of the future, for us? A couple of the other speakers have said quite eloquently how we need, Radnor is always on the forefront, you know? It's, hey, we're Radnor, right? I mean, high fives to the school district in listening to the evidence on sleep and the high school. So come on board. Look at where you're living. What do you want it to look like in 25 years? The lease that I read includes free access to the Willows Park Preserve for nearly free rein, and they also can restrict the use of the park, of the lands. What are the township's current plans to work through its, especially within the Willows lease? What are your current plans to meet your action plan and commitment to reduce greenhouse gases? And how exactly, especially with the Willows Park Preserve lease, are you working, and is that lease working, to meet Radnor's pride, to promote and implement steps to protect the environment? Where is that in that lease? And all I would ask of you is that, if you can't actually answer those questions, and I know you don't have time to give it to me right now, but if you can't answer those questions, at least hold off on this lease, because you're giving away something that was gifted to you before you were here in 1973. That gentleman who, his name is on a stone in front of the mansion, but what you're doing right now is the exact opposite of what he was trying to establish, not just until 2019. And again, I just want to thank you guys, because Radnor is awesome. This Willows Park Preserve lease is concerning, and I'd hope you would actually hold off and get a little bit more clarity with how that land is going to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening? Okay, then we will move on to Superintendent Flanagan and Mr. Zankowski.
Tonight, we're very excited to announce the promotion of a new sergeant's position. I asked Lieutenant Dietrich and Judge Lang to come up and help support and swear in this new promotion. I would ask Chris Ford and his family to come forward, please. Currently, Chris Ford has been employed by the Radnor Police Department and has been assigned to the Radnor Detective Unit. During that time of patrol and detectives, Chris Ford was on the Central Delco SWAT team for six years. He was a field training officer, an acting sergeant, and a detective for five years, earning several unit citations and merit commendations. earning several unit citations and merit commendations. One of the toughest jobs in the Detective Unit is to be in charge of the evidence, a major, major responsibility, which Chris took on that role and has done an excellent job, including revamping the entire evidence department. He's also a digital forensic expert, and most importantly, he's here with his wife and his two children to help support him and also his parents. At this point in time, we'll bring before Chris Ford to raise his hand to become promoted to Sergeant of Police. Judge Hunter?
Judge Hunter, Judge Lang. I, Christopher Ford.
I, Christopher Ford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties.
Of a police sergeant of Radnor Township.
Of a police sergeant of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers to the best of my ability.
Obey all my orders from my superior officers to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I would like to thank the Radnor officers who stand behind. It's always exciting to have building blocks, and we always, if people are training and ready to move up. There's many new officers here. If you train and work hard, the opportunities that come up for special units and promotion. Thank the Board of Commissioners for supporting our police mission, and again, congratulations, Sergeant Ford.
Okay, so apparently, well, congratulations, Sergeant Ford. How wonderful. And congratulations to his family, and thank you for sharing him with us. We appreciate that. It always is a nice night when we get to honor our police and recognize one of our own. So thank you. Apparently Sergeant Smith had to leave, so we will not be doing that recognition this evening. Hopefully, he can come back and join us another night. So we are going to move on. I don't know if you all want to stay or you'd like to leave. We can recess for a minute. Have a good night. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. All right, so we will, we will move on with the announcements of boards and commission vacancies. Commissioner Larkin.
So as of right now, this may change after the next vote, but we are looking at the moment for one person for the Board of Health, four people for Carfac, one person for the Code Appeals Board, one vacancy on Harb. One vacancy on the Rental Housing Appeals Board, one vacancy on the Shade Tree Commission, four vacancies on SWIMAC, and one vacancy on the Zoning Hearing Board.
All right, and do you want to move on with the appointments to various boards and commissions?
Yeah, my expectation is that those numbers are about to change. So first off, is there a motion to appoint Rob Norton to Carfac?
So moved.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Clark absent. Is there a motion to appoint Tony Mendesino to Carfac?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Clark absent. Is there a motion to appoint Seth Resser to the Shade Tree Commission?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Clark absent. And is there a motion to appoint Lisa Hammaker, MD, to the Board of Health?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero with Commissioner Clark absent.
Okay, so everyone will know, we do still have some vacancies on our boards and commissions, and thank you to all those that interviewed this evening and everyone who will now be serving. We are grateful to all of our boards and commissions for their work. Moving on, item A, Resolution 2019-63 engaging PFM, sorry, item 7A, engaging PFM to provide financial consulting services for the general obligation bonds, series 2019. Mr. White.
Thank you. If it's okay, rather than providing the board with the same explanation three different times, perhaps I can just talk about Resolutions 2019-63, 64, and Ordinance 2019-07 now, and then we can address those. Obviously, the board has to vote on each one individually, but they all cover the same topic. The Ordinance 2019-07 contemplates the issuance of non-electoral debt. We've got them bulleted out in two different series. Series A is to refund the 2018 sewer improvement notes, and then Series B would be the issuance of new money for a list of capital projects that the board has been reviewing for the last couple of months. As the township has done for the past six, seven years, we have, well, when we've issued bonds, we have negotiated those sales with Benning and Scattergood, and we have engaged PFM as our financial advisor. PFM represents the township, and those transactions, they ensure that, or they work on the township's behalf with Benning on the pricing and the final numbers as they come in on the, whatever day it is that we ultimately sell the bonds. PFM also provides the township with assistance in doing the official statements. They provide the township with all the market analysis that we've been using for the last month of, as we've had these discussions, as well as market analysis up through the sale of the bonds and then thereafter. Dan Kozlov from PFM was with us last week at the special meeting where we went through the projects, and he unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight, but he is our appointed representative from PFM that assists the township. Dan has been with us for a number of years or a number of transactions and always has done a fantastic job. So with regard to Resolution 2019-63, by bringing PFM in to represent the township in that, for the transaction, it's definitely the best way to go. It aligns the township with best practices from GFOA, as well as just making good common sense when it comes to making a transaction that large that will impact the township for a long time. We know that we'll have the experts on our side representing us. The same can be said then with Resolution 2964, engaging Cozen-O'Connor as bond counsel. Cozen has represented the township going back to 2010, I believe. Suzanne has been with us for the last eight years. She is here tonight if the board has any direct questions regarding the legality of any parts of the bond issuance, but Cozen has always done a fantastic job as well, helping us navigate through the various state and federal obligations with the bond issuance, and not just complying with the state and federal, but also complying with the other provisions in the ordinance, making sure that we're spending the money on what we say we're going to spend the money on in all of our post issuance reporting and obligations on that front as well. And then we can get into a little bit more detail on, when we get to the ordinance, on the projects themselves, and however you'd like to go on that. But specific to the two resolutions engaging PFM and Cozen, obviously, the administration very, very much recommends that we pass those and bring those folks on board for this transaction.
Okay. Before we discuss, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-63, engaging PFM to provide financial consulting services for the general obligation bonds, series 2019?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any Commissioner discussion with regards to this?
No, you can ask that question. No, this is for PFM. What's the cost?
Well, the cost is, since we're contemplating two different issues, there'll be, we would, as the market exists right now, we'd split the issue up into a series A and series B. So the cost for PFM, I believe, is, it's in the packet, less than $20,000, I want to say $19,000 and change. $19,400, thanks, John. That's for PFM.
Any other questions?
And one other thing, with regard to those costs and the costs of bond counsel, those are capitalized into the, into the price of the bonds and amortized over life of the bonds.
Okay. Are there any other questions to the motion on the floor? Any other staff comment to the motion on the floor? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2019-63, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Nagel off the dais and Commissioner Clark absent. May I get a motion to approve 2019-64, engaging Cozen-O'Connor as bond counsel for the general obligation bonds, series 2019?
Commissioner Broski, before we start this, I'm going to recuse myself as there's conflict with my wife working for Cozen.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Abel. May I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
All right, any discussion to the motion on the floor?
John, does Jake need to recuse in this case?
Is it, it's not a conflict, is it? We're providing a pecuniary benefit to the firm that his wife works for, if we vote for it.
Yeah, he needs to recuse himself.
All right.
Any other questions?
The question I had is the, on the motion, so this is for bond counsel, I guess, I'll hold this up until we approve bond counsel. It's on, my question is on the actual C, not B, sorry.
Oh, okay, because I was going to say we're approving bond counsel right now. All right, any other Commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-64, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Abel recused, or excuse me, abstaining, no, recusing, and Commissioner Clark absent. Ordinance 2019-07, authorizing the incurrence of the, by the Radnor Town, by the Township of Radnor of non-electoral debt by the issuance of a general obligation bond, series 2019, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $13 million, $13,700,000 for the following purposes. Series A, not to exceed $5 million of proceeds needed to refund the 2018 sewer improvement notes at 4.5 million plus capitalized closing costs and pricing flexibility. Series B, not to include, not to exceed $8,700,000 of new money needed to fund general capital projects totaling 7.3 million plus capitalized closing costs and pricing flexibility. May I get a motion to approve?
So, second.
All right, any discussion on this item?
The language says capitalized closing cost and pricing flexibility, and that drives the not to exceed amount up from 7.3 million to 8.7. So does this include capitalized interest? Is that a closing cost, capitalized interest? Or is that not covered?
I'm going to let Michael Wolf, who is from Benning and Scattergood, if he wouldn't mind addressing those questions specifically. And the quick answer is no, but the detail behind it, Michael can get into.
All right, and while he's on his way up, what's the cost for bond counsel? Because I forgot to ask that. We asked about PFM.
Bear with me, I'm scanning through the agenda.
It's like $500, right? Okay.
And again, those amounts are higher than we typically see them, just because there's going to be two transactions, in all likelihood.
Right, and all of those, aren't they, well, so, this might be a question for bond counsel, are they subject to like 2% of the cost of issuance limit for closing costs every week? Or is there, is that a rule that we still have, or is that not a rule?
That's not a rule in the governmental bond context.
Suzanne said that's not a rule for the governmental bond context. Capitalized interest, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Michael Wolf from Benning and Scattergood. The preliminary numbers that have been put together for the bond issue in two pieces show no use of funds for capitalized interest. The first interest payment will be paid by the township from its own resources, not from bond proceeds.
Okay.
When Bill says that the costs are capitalized, that's the common way of making the bond issue a little bit larger to include all the costs, and then the savings on the refunding portion is calculated, including all those costs.
And capitalized interest?
No.
No. So the issue that comes up here with the series B is that we have projects that will go on for several years, so the, the issue of capitalized interest is not covered, which means we just pay interest on those projects even though they're not completed. I guess the theory being they're not revenue bonds, so it doesn't matter, it's, just go ahead and pay the interest.
That's exactly right, and the first principal payment on the new money bonds will be in 2020, when you will already spent, you know, some of the beginning of the proceeds for the new money.
And the series A is a refinancing of our shorter-term notes that we issued in 2018 to basically cover emergency projects and a depletion of our general fund for sewer projects. So this is refinancing that short term to a longer term?
Actually, I saw the meeting on television last time in which that was contemplated, but the numbers before me tonight show no extension of the short-term loan to a longer term.
So what's the term?
10 years.
10 years.
And as it was, no extension.
No extension, and therefore, a lower interest rate means cost savings on that.
Yes, and there's a minimum threshold specified in the ordinance.
And on the series B, so, the reason I raise that is so that the public can understand that the indebtedness that is represented by the series A bonds will save the taxpayers' money from debt that has previously been issued, and that it's not new, it's not in any way going to increase the expense of the township. It'll save money for the township.
That's right. We thought that the bank loan rate was low, this is lower.
It's lower, interest rates, every time we say that the interest rates can't get any lower, they seem to be getting a little lower. The series B, my understanding of the series B is that we have completed one of our prior bond issues so that the debt service payment from prior years would actually be reduced but for the series B. So therefore, there will be no net increase in taxes because we're filling that gap from debt service that had fallen off as completed versus last year, is that correct?
That's exactly right, exactly how it's designed. The series B will have a 20-year term, which corresponds to the weighted economic life of the projects. In fact, they're longer, they're much longer, but the bonds are 20 years.
And as far as our debt service payment as a component of the budget of the township, that will not increase from this series B because of completion of payments on a prior bond issue.
That's right.
So again, this is no detriment to the township taxpayers. It doesn't increase the dollars that the taxpayers would need to pay as a result of debt service, just solely looking at that issue.
That's correct.
The question that I also wanted to find out about the rules for the IRS, one, how quickly do we need to spend down the series B, 7.3 million on these list of projects that we have? I think we had to spend it within three years, but I don't remember what the rules are.
You're close, you're close. It's 85% of the new money in three years.
85% of new money in three years. And what happens if we don't hit that 85%? And what happens if we find out a project costs more or less than we anticipated and need to either reallocate funds to another project or reallocate funds to another project, or get, pay additional money out of the township? How does that work, and what are the rules, and what do we need to be aware of?
I would love to give you my off-the-cuff and informal answer, but I don't think Suzanne.
Why don't we have, why don't we have bond counsel, I trust that. I mean, she's here, I mean, she likes to do some work, right, so she likes to participate.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Suzanne Mays, I'm a partner with Cozen O'Connor. So on your first question about what happens if you don't meet the requirements to expend, you would yield restrict the proceeds that are left to the bond yield at that point, but we would counsel you to spend them diligently?
Okay, so we would yield restrict
The investment.
The proceeds, so we would yield restrict the amount that we had unused
That's correct.
In, in, or do we have a construction fund set up for this, or is it just going to the general fund?
It's generally segregated so that it's trackable.
Yes, we segregate it.
Segregated in the general fund. So to the extent if we had $2 million left, we would need, and say you had it invested at 5%, we would need to yield restrict it back down to the 2.2%.
That's correct.
And how, how would, how would we accomplish that? How would we yield restrict that money?
You could go into tax exempts, they, they are always deemed to meet yield restriction. Or you could go into slugs, I mean, they're, assuming the slug window is open, that's a, that's a federal treasury.
Would have to change the investment that it's sitting in.
And just real quick to that point, the township typically engages with Pliggett for the investment of these bond proceeds, and part of that engagement is the monitoring of the yields, both in terms of what we're paying and what we're earning. So Pliggett would also assist the township in making sure that whatever investments we had, we would have to move into would be compliant.
Okay. Is there any danger, danger of the bonds being deemed taxable, or any, any parade of horribles like that from something like this?
No, not if the township currently reasonably expects to meet those expenditure timelines.
And replacing projects?
And replacing a project. So the estimates of project costs in the ordinance are estimates. So if you stayed with those projects and the dollars moved one way or the other, that does not invalidate the ordinance. If you wanted to add an entirely new project that wasn't contemplated, then you would undergo a process not dissimilar to this where it would be done via legislative action, resolution or ordinance.
Would there new offering documents or other notices need to be made to the public or otherwise?
There would be a notice with respect to the resolution or ordinance, but there'd be no new offering document and just a notice filing with the Department of Community and Economic Development, but no new approval required and no opinion required. We would ask some questions about the nature of the project to make sure that it's a project that is tax-exempt, financeable, because you would be using remaining tax-exempt proceeds to fund it. But, no, beyond that, there wouldn't be anything.
Also, we talked briefly about new limitations which do not permit the advanced refunding of municipal ordinance. Can you talk about what that means to us, and is that something that we need to be aware of, that we can't refinance these before, I guess, before the call, or we can refinance it after the call?
You can refinance within 90 days of the call, so, which is called a current refunding. So the Tax Act at the end of 2017 did away with advance refundings, Commissioner Booker's exactly right. That was the ability to issue bonds, take the proceeds, put them into an escrow for any length of time, waiting for the call, the first call date on your then-existing debt. The ability to do that has been struck from the Internal Revenue Code, and now when you refinance, you need to refinance very close in time to when your earlier debt is callable or redeemable. The thought being on the part of the federal government that they did not want two bond issues out at the same time for the same project for any longer than absolutely necessary, thus the 90 days. So that means you've got to get within approximately three months of your call date typically in order to finance.
So the series A is a 10-year maturity and the series B is also 10, or is that 20 years? 20 years, you said. So five, it's a five-year call on the 20.
So I, just sorry to interrupt, but to that point, that's part of the reason why we're recommending splitting it up into two transactions, which keeps the township at bank-qualified levels, which the 10 million is the threshold for bank-qualified. A bank quali, whoops, a bank-qualified transaction gives us a shorter call window, five years, as opposed to a non-bank-qualified, has I believe an eight or maybe longer year call. So by splitting this up and doing two transactions, we get the flexibility of having a call in five years versus eight or longer.
So splitting it up, you mean series A and series B, or are you splitting up differently than that?
It has to, that's correct, but they need to be sold at least 15 days apart, they need to be two separate issues for tax purposes. And they will each be, be bank-qualified, BQ.
So how much additional work are we doing with documents? Loan documents, offering documents, is it a total duplication, or is it, can we do both in one? Set of documents?
Well, there'll be two separate closings by virtue of the timing of the sales, so there is some duplication, but there's certainly efficiency because you're mailing two preliminary official statements in close in time. So there, there's efficiency there, and the, in looking at whether it made sense to do the two deals separately, BQ, the costs were taken into account, and that was done, you know, as an all-in analysis to make sure that those, that the cost of the second issue was more than accounted for by the BQ savings. You can't do a single deal with a face amount of larger than 10 million in BQ. So, but you can have two separate issues because some is deemed designated and some is designated, and have that in the aggregate greater than 10 million if you separate the deals.
But again, we, we basically have to do, it's not just new closing papers 15 days later, it's, it's all, really the documents are duplicated for each issuance.
That's correct, there's two sets of documents, and the purposes are different, so the tax analysis is slightly different, I mean, they're not, they're not identical deals.
That's all I have.
Just a couple of questions. So you charge, it's $50,000 is your fee?
So it's two different fees, one for each deal, and the first fee is higher, the second fee is lower because of the economies.
What's the amount?
Of the two fees?
Yeah.
My, my recollection, I bring my engagement letter with me, I want to say it's about 29 and 23, I believe.
So about 29 and 23?
Correct.
Is what?
50, 52.
52. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the percentage, but let's use the 52. About how many hours does it take to complete this? Just curious.
I mean, it depends on the deal.
So this deal, about how many hours?
We'd have to get a little further into it for me to give you a really good estimate.
Did it take more, did it take more than 100 hours?
Will this deal take more? I don't know, I mean, I can tell you, we've spent a lot of time already just drafting the ordinance and looking at the initial, we did tax analysis to figure out whether we needed to do two or one issues just to reach the conclusion on the bank-qualified. So it, it takes a lot of work, the, the tax regulations around tax-exempt borrowing are hundreds of pages thick, and the field is highly regulated by both the Securities and Exchange Commission and the Internal Revenue Service, so we, we really do spend a tremendous amount of time.
Okay, it just, it just seems like a large number, and I know that there are different levels. You know, I know that we're not going to, we're going to pay you guys more than we're going to pay our, our solicitor, but you know, if it's just some kind of cookie cutter deal, and
There aren't, respectfully, there are no cookie cutter deals anymore, I mean, Mike has done this a little longer than I have, but.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure where our money's going, it would be, it's a lot of money, it would be bad if I didn't ask. The other question would be to Bill White. I don't think, I don't think that this is going to affect our bond rating, is that correct?
No, sir, this will not have an effect. And Suzanne won't talk about it, but I will, just real quickly, in terms of the, the cost, is, not only is, are there no cookie cutters, and we can't in this meeting get into the, all the complexities that go into one of these transactions, let alone two. But the quality of the work that we're getting from all the professionals that we engage on these are top-notch. So there's never any question on the level of service that we're getting, so while it may look like a high-dollar amount on the transaction front, we can be assured that what we're getting in return is worth every penny.
Does anyone else have any questions? I just have one good question, but I don't know, gentlemen on this side, no one? So we've got the list of projects, you know, we've put that forth, and I think Commissioner Booker asked this, but maybe I'm dumbing it down a little bit for myself. So if one of those projects comes in under the amount, are we permitted to add another project in to take, to utilize some of those funds that we haven't utilized?
The easier thing to do would be, and this may not happen, would be to use the amount for some unexpected excess cost related to another project. Life would tell me that that is possible. Or we could do a brief resolution that you could add another project, yes, in theory, yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right, I would just like to thank everyone on the dais, as well as our staff, as well as the public. We, to get to this point, we knew that we had, and we still do, have a lot of unfunded capital programs and capital, capital expenses. And this is a way for us to start attacking some of those projects, we set some criteria, we had a lot of really good discussions about this. Extra meetings, which I know nobody was interested in having, gentlemen, I'm sorry to interrupt your conversation. So, you know, I want to, I'm thanking you two for being so helpful in this process. You know, to get us to this point, so, you know, I'm, some of these project, I'm, I'm excited about a lot of these projects, some of them are not my most favorite projects, but I do believe that in order to get some important things done for the township, this is something that we need to do, and some of these projects have been waiting a very long time, so. Did you have another question, Commissioner Farhi? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Oh, okay.
Well, no, I was just explaining about the hours that go into the, there's a lot of, there's, bond counsel will prepare all the transaction documents and give the opinion, and then there's also an offering document, which generally won't be done by, would be done by underwriter, underwriter counsel, but the hours generally are slim, very slim, and they, I would, normally we don't see them tend to go over, over. With regard to the projects, not all the projects I'm supportive, supportive of that's on this list, and specifically the one for the expansion of the, of the left-turn lanes at Eagle Road and King of Pressure Road. So there's some projects in here, as you said, Lisa, that we don't all agree on.
We can agree that we are getting some good things done for many people across the township.
What we can agree is that this won't increase taxes.
All right, we got an agreement, I like it, we got an agreement. Is there any other commissioner comment to the motion on the floor? Any staff comment?
Just real quickly, just to sum up, I, I think that's a good point, especially given the, the public comment earlier this evening is, first of all, what, one of the primary goals of the board with this borrowing, at least the new money piece, was to ensure that our, the township's debt service expense is on an annual basis, does not change. That's what these graphs are showing, so this is our 19 number now, without the bond, without the new bonds, and then you could see with, when we add the 19 bonds, it stays at the same level, so we're not increasing the general fund's exposure to additional debt. By, and at the same time, we're accomplishing a little over $7 million in projects. And the other thing, I just, real quick, is, yeah, the word debt tends to carry some negative connotation with it, but it, it is absolutely not unique for us to be considering or to be borrowing money to satisfy our capital. The alternatives, especially when you're talking about cash, is higher taxes, and, and we eliminated that discussion when this conversation started months ago, so it's not unique for Radnor to be issuing bonds to do these projects. Are there other opportunities out there with development and the like? Absolutely. But I, I just wanted to respond quickly to that earlier comment, but we're no different than any other municipality in, in considering this bond deal.
And do you have a sense of what the rating will be? Will we get the double A, double A1, do you think?
I have no reason to think otherwise, yes.
Our, our underwriter says yes, one word.
We'll hold him to it.
Well, one, one of the issues that we do hear from the public, though, is the issue of capitalized interest, that money's sitting, the project's not done, we're paying interest. We're not borrowing that interest, but there's no, because it's not a revenue bond, it's, it's not important to borrow that money until the revenue comes in, so it's, it's, it's a cost, but that is a concern of some of the constituents.
But remember, at the same time, we're investing the unspent proceeds, and the interest earned on those, on the unspent portion can be used to pay for the interest that we're incurring at the same time.
But we're not getting as much on the investment as we have on payments, is that correct, or negative arbitrage?
You know, with changing interest rates, I, I can't say that we won't on this deal with the interest rates being what they are, so.
We're closer than we've ever been to earning as much as the bonds are costing us. It hasn't been like that in a long, in a long time, but.
All right, so that's an important point, so the people know that while the money sits, while we're waiting for the projects to be done, we're earning almost as much as we're paying in interest, so it's.
Yeah, we're not allowed to invest long-term, but right now, short-term rates are so, are so high, then the yield curve is inverted, so short-term rates available now in safe investments are higher than they've been, and our long-term borrowing costs are lower than they've been, so the, the delta is smaller than it's ever been in a long time. But the other thing is, a lot of towns that don't have money set aside have no choice but to capitalize interest and borrow the early interest payments until the projects are placed in service. That's an expensive proposition. And I'm glad you don't have to do that, because if you, if you do capitalize interest, you're paying that, for that over the 20-year life of the bonds. It's an expensive way to carry the first couple of years, and that's why you have cash reserves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for being here, thank you both. Any other staff comment? Any?
Just, just one quick question, where does that money, Bill, where does that money stay? So before you use it, do you put it in some kind of, what instrument, a money market? What kind of instrument do you put that money before we use it?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, we will enter into an agreement with Pliggett, and we'll open an account with them. Pliggett is a, it's a, it's a the title's escaping me right now, but it's a, it's a consortium of governments that we pool our money together, and it's invested all within the regulations that each government requires, but it, it, it's a, it's a managed asset account. And when we open that account, they are given all of the same bond documents that we're, we're signing when we close the deal, so the specific investments are, I, I can't list those off the top of my head, but they're within the regulations of the township's investment policy and what we're required to earn with regard to the bonds, if that, if that plays in.
And, because I know that call, callability is an option, I know that I always say this, if ever there's a bond that is at a, at a discount, are we allowed to go in and purchase it and retire debt that way? Let's say we have, let's say a project doesn't get done, and we have an extra, Rich's project doesn't get done, we have an extra $345,000 that's just sitting around. Could we go in, you know, so we could either decide to use it for another project, but, but could we? Oh, he did S. Oh, okay, all right. No, 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 that's fine, but we can, can we retire, we can, can we retire the debt?
After the call date, I believe the answer's correct.
But can you go on the open market?
In theory, yeah, yeah. That's assuming that the township's capital project list is completely funded, which is unlikely.
Okay, I think we were up to public comment. Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right, then I believe this is a roll-call vote, correct? Yes? All right, do you want to call it off, or do you want me to do that? I saw a roll-call vote. Yes, I saw a roll-call vote in the papers.
Yeah, well, it, we're just introducing it tonight.
Oh.
So I guess it's, it's kind of our call if we want to do it or not. The, the one in July with the ultimate adoption.
It'll be roll-call then, it doesn't need to be roll-call then, no.
I'm not a lawyer, so I don't want to answer that.
No roll-call? All right, then I will go ahead and call the non-roll-call vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2019-07, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. Thank you all very much.
So you're not recused for this, but you're, just for the, the appointment of bond account?
Need to recuse for the whole thing. Thank you both very much for being here. We appreciate it, and appreciate your service on behalf of the township. Okay, discussion. Pico tree pruning operations. Mr. McBride, thank you for being here. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here as well. So you all are here this evening to discuss the tree pruning operations that you have here in the township, although I know that you did say to me prior to the beginning of the meeting is that you have no planned tree pruning operations at this time. You've completed all of those.
We haven't.
Yes?
I'll, I'll get into it in my.
In your presentation? Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I don't know, Mr. Nercini or Mr. Zinkowski, do you want to, or are we good? Just let Mr. McBride start? Okay.
Thanks, John.
Welcome and thank you.
Madam President, members of the board, residents of Radnor Township, good evening. My name's Ed McBride. I'm the manager of local government affairs at Pico. We've been asked by the Board of Commissioners and the Township Manager to offer a presentation pertaining to our vegetation management program. Now, this is the program that's cyclical in that we, we go around our electric system every five years doing trimming, and you'll hear more about that from our arborist. Before I introduce the program managers, I want to just clarify something, if I may, and, and you were leading into it, Madam President. As we were preparing for this meeting tonight, we had heard that there were some questions about what we call project trimming, or, or project tree removal. And that is associated with some of the larger projects when we're doing a, a pole exchange, where we take out, we're taking out utility poles, putting new infrastructure in, putting upgraded systems of, strengthening our, our cable system between pole to pole. And we have no project like that scheduled for Radnor Township. When we do, our normal operation of outreach to the community is we would start with a presentation to the officials of the township, then we would send a letter to any of the residents that are in the affected area of the project. And then if it need be, if there was more information required, we would hold, host an open house somewhere in the township where folks could come in, meet the subject matter experts, and see the project on, on storyboards, walk through and get as much information as they, they would like. Before I introduce the arborist, I just want to offer to you, Madam President, I know you have a busy agenda, and you've already had a, a lot on your plate. At some point, if you believe that you, the folks of the township have heard enough of what we have to present, just give us the signal. Pico is currently investing $900 million in system upgrades in the service territory of the five counties that you're, we're all familiar with, Philadelphia, Bucks, Montgomery, Chester, and Delaware, and York County. So there's six counties in our service territory. This $900 million is going to change out all antiquated equipment, and it also is going to install what we call storm, storm hardening equipment that will resist trees falling on it, not 100%, but much better than you're seeing now. It also, it will also improve the service reliability. And you'll hear more about what that does in a moment. A little background on, on our two arborists that are here tonight. Jeff Watson will be leading the vegetation system maintenance presentation this evening. Jeff is a Senior Vegetation Management Program Manager. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in horticulture from Clemson University. He's an IOA, ISA certified arborist and utility specialist, and he's been with Pico for 23 years. He's been around Radnor Township. In fact, some of the residents here tonight have talked to him in, in the past. We are introducing for the first time this evening a new employee at, at Pico. He's a senior program manager in vegetation management. His name is Chris Harris. Chris has a Bachelor of Science in Forestry at, from Virginia Tech. He's also an ISA certified arborist. He spent three years with another utility in arbor culture, and he's also been in residential tree care prior to coming to the utility industry. The good news for Radnor Township and other folks in Delaware County is, is his assignment will be only in Delaware County. So you'll have a go-to person anytime you need an arborist. At this time, I'd like to ask Jeff Watson to come up and, and do the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Yes, good evening, and thanks for having us today. We're going to provide a, just a brief overview of what we do in, with Pico and vegetation management. We provide a, we've got a presentation here that Chris is going to help me with. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. I'm sure we. Sorry. There you go. Okay, thank you, Chris. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what we do in vegetation management at a high level. We, we approach our work from a, two standpoints, either the preventive maintenance side or corrective maintenance. Chris and I primarily are doing the preventive maintenance, which is cyclical maintenance. We do about every five years. Now, we are working, starting next year, towards a, towards a four-year maintenance program. We're trying to reduce the, the interval. This involves mostly tree maintenance around the existing wires to keep clearance and to provide reliable electric for our customers. It's, a lot of the data, a lot of the, the work we do is data-driven, based on historical problems. And we try to do, we do, part of our corrective maintenance programs will address some of those areas. I know in Radnor specifically, there are some reliability problem areas that we do try to address under, more under the corrective maintenance program. So, safety is the most important thing about maintaining our equipment. Trees can, if they get in contact with wires, it can energize the tree, cause the tree to catch fire. It's a dangerous situation. So we definitely, that's definitely our first and foremost approach with the work and with all, all the folks that do the work out on the, out on, in the field for us. About one-third of all of our outages are caused by trees and tree failures, either through growth into the wires, or more, more than not, it's caused by tree failures or trees breaking out, or limbs breaking and making contact with the wires. That's about, probably about 75 to 80% of the tree-related outages are from tree failures. Another big issue we come across is the, the wrong tree being planted in the, in, under wires, or a tree that's going to get large. When they're planted under electrical wires, it creates, as long, long-term, it creates a problem where the tree gets pruned back in a fashion that may not be aesthetically pleasing, and it's a, and it's a constant maintenance, maintenance issue for the utility. So how do we perform our, our maintenance? This is a best management practice for utility pruning of trees. This is a publication from, from ISA, and it just shows the different techniques that are generally used for trees that, that coexist with the wires. We do open up areas where the wires are passing through to provide clearance so that the trees are safe distance and not causing power outages. And we do get a lot of concerns about the way it looks, and the trees do grow back. But this is, this is an industry best practice. It's how it's done for all utilities across the country. And the alternative is completely removing trees like this, which we, we do that occasionally if warranted, but generally, we're, as part of preventive maintenance, we're, we're pruning existing trees. And this is, this is what we don't want to do. This is an example of rounding or topping a tree, and it creates a lot of sucker growth from the cut. And if the cuts aren't made, those cuts are not appropriate, and they don't heal up. And those, all that, all that rapid regrowth or sprouts that come out from the cut will tend to fail over time because it doesn't, they don't heal up. So we discourage this, and we don't, we don't round trees over. It's a discredited practice. This next slide is talking about integrated vegetation management. And this is a, these are techniques that are used, taken an approach where there's not one, it's not just pruning back limbs, or not just removing trees. You may be a combination of things, where you're doing some mechanical clearing, brush hog, and herbicide applications. It's used more in our transmission right-of-way areas, where we have the, the transmission lines that run from power plants along those towers to, to our substations, where the distribution is, where, where it's distributed to the homes. But we do see a lot of good benefits once, and a lot of the, there's not too much of this in Radnor Township, but where we, where we've implemented this strategy or these techniques, we do see really nice benefits for wildlife enhancement and ecological value in these areas. This is just examples of what they look like, but the, like I said, not too much of this in Radnor, but we do have it in the more, more rural areas of our territory. This is just showing a quick diagram of, of what the, what our distribution system may look like. Generally, the, the high voltage wires are up at the top of the pole. You'll see transformers on pole that step down the electric from primary voltage to secondary voltage, where it's distributed to the customers through service wires. Generally, the lower, this doesn't show any communication wires, but generally, on the lower parts of the poles, well, we'll have the communication wires that are not electric, either Comcast, Verizon, things like that. So we maintain, for, for our preventive maintenance program, we maintain the primary electric wire from pole to pole, and any other Pico equipment that's on that pole. If we have, we don't maintain the service wires directly to people's homes. And there's some information here. If, if customers do have concerns, they can certainly call in. And we do, we can't, we do occasionally remove broken limbs and things like that on the service wires. But if it's something that we don't get involved with or out of our scope, there's, we can get the line de-energized or dropped for, for the customer's contractor to do work safely. And to make requests through our system, it's pico.com/servicerequests. I think there's a slide up here, yeah, next. So you can make requests either by calling into our, to our customer service line, or through our, or through the website, if somebody, you know, if residents want us to look at something. This is a slide on the, on the Tree Care Industry Association. Just, if you're looking, it's hard to, sometimes difficult to find qualified tree folks, so, or companies that can work around electric wires. This, this website will help, help you locate companies that are accredited utility contractors, and may be able to work around electric wires. It's not saying it's a, there, there could be other contractors as well that aren't on this site, but, but this is definitely a site where you can at least start if you're looking for qualified private tree contractors. So we get questions about the removal of debris from the work. So on our, when we're doing preventive maintenance work, we do remove all the debris on planned maintenance. On the corrective maintenance side, we also remove the debris. Occasionally, if we're doing tree removals, or there's bigger pieces of wood, we generally leave that on-site. We don't, if we do remove trees, we don't grind stumps. And we generally, like I said, generally, generally leave the wood. For emergencies, emergency jobs, we do not clean up the broken limbs when they fall or break into our power lines. We simply, you know, we're in restoration mode, and we're, we're getting the power back on. It's, it's no different than if a tree broke in your yard and just fell across the middle of the yard. We, you know, we don't, we don't own the trees, so we, we don't, do not clean up for, for storms or emergency.
So, just a question on that. A long bit off, I think, we have, where we have Harford Park, is that on, is that bit off? Yeah. Gulf Creek, Gulf Creek. Giant tree, I mean, 10-foot diameter. Forty-foot log on, on the side of the road, and it's in the woods there, and it's been there for a long time. So that, something like that, if it was cut down to save the tree, to save the power lines, you'll, you'll just leave that, that, that log there?
If it was from a, from like a broken limb or a tree failure, we would not clean up the, the log. If it was a tree, a planned tree removal that we, that, that our contractor identified and, and removed the tree, we generally will, generally will cut the wood, but it's a case-by-case basis.
Well, you're contracting this with local people, right? Or this isn't Pico people that actually do this work, or are they Pico employees?
No, we have, we have a Aspland Tree Expert Company does the, does the actual work for us. We have a company called Davy Resource Group that does a lot of the planning for us.
Right. So my question is, what kind of coordination do you have with the locality? In other words, if you leave the logs there, or somebody will call up a commissioner and say, who's going to clean up the logs? And then we call the township, and they say, we didn't cut anything down, we don't know anything about it. So what kind of coordination is there? And is it unfair to rely on the townships to actually clean up what could be a massive tree?
Yeah, I guess it, it would depend on the circumstances, and something like that, you know, a one-off like that would be handled through the county fairs manager, and then, you know, and some, like Chris or myself would get involved if needed to try to resolve specific issues. It's a case-by-case basis, but.
I'll send you on that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a case-by-case situation. So this, just some more slides of kind of some typical areas. This, I believe this is in Doylestown up in Bucks County, but, you know, this is a tree that's, a mature tree through, through, through a lot of high voltage wires. So, you know, obviously, when the, when the tree, I don't know which was there first of the wire, I'm guessing wires were there, but anyway, the, you know, it's a situation where we're trying to allow the tree to coexist. And we do get some concerns like that, especially in older trees in the, you know, in the burrows, or townships where there's street trees. So we try to be sensitive to the, to the best that we can around those types of areas.
Can I just ask a follow-up question with that? So, when something like that happens, and you wind up killing the tree, it winds up killing the tree, who's, who's responsible to get rid of the tree? I mean, you were the ones that made the cuts.
Yeah. Well, again, if, kill it, whether it killed the tree or not, I mean, that's a case-by-case basis, so it would depend on the circumstances. It's not an answer I can really give you without, without detail.
So how does one, I mean, how do, I guess the question is, is how do, how do you decide if, you know, the tree was just an old tree, and it was going to die within a couple of years anyway, or we made some bad cuts, and this tree is now dead? Is there a process? Is there some kind of, what's the process with that, if you could speak to it?
The customer would, the customer would call in, or the township would call in, and we'd address it on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the condition of the tree was. Yeah, we do some tree removals, like I said, you know, if the tree was a threat to, you know, generally, the tree removals we're doing are the ones that are in decline to begin with, or a threat to our wires. So if that particular, you know, if there's a tree that's already in severe decline, or it's a, a potential tree that's going to cause an outage from breaking into the wires, then that's something we, we might address on, under tree removal. So, again, it's, it's, it's hard to answer a question because there's so many, there's 100, we could be here for two, three, or four hours talking about different scenarios.
Sure, I mean, I just look at that, and I look.
We deal with, we deal with it all the time.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I look at that, and then I look at the aesthetics, and that can't be, A, the aesthetics aren't nice, but I don't know, and I'm not an arborist, and you know more about it than me, but I can't imagine that that's healthy for the tree to, as well.
Well, yeah, that's, I didn't talk much about that. So this is, it's, like I said before, it's a best practice. It's not, it does not, in most cases, it's not going to injure the health of the tree. The tree's going to coexist, trying to train the tree to go around the, around the wires. So. So it's not going to, it, it doesn't kill the tree. Some trees get a lot of other problems. Yeah, but generally, it's not going to cause the tree to decline or injure the tree. So everybody has an opinion, but I'm, I'm an arborist, Chris is an arborist, I mean, everybody has their opinion, but it doesn't generally do that, or every time we cut a tree, it would die and they certainly don't do that.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just ask one question? I talked with you guys a little bit about this before the meeting. So it, is it, so you guys are the arborists and do you, are you guys, do you guys go out and make the plans? Like, do you, so I'm just going to use Darby Paley Road as an example. Did you, do you guys go and take a look at, you know, what needs to be done and put together a plan? Or do you have a subcontractor? Do you mention Davy? Is that, so they go and they put together a plan and then they communicate that to Asplanda and they do the actual work? Because, you know, I know there, there are some, some areas where you look at the trees and then, you know, I understand why they wouldn't, might need to be cut like that, but, you know, as I mentioned, there are like pine trees, like where the whole sides are just completely sheared off. And I know we don't want to get into, you know, case-by-case because we could all talk about it forever, I'm sure. I'm just trying to understand the process. And when you, do you go and speak with the homeowners and alert them, hey, we're going to be shaving off the one entire side of your tree, bank of trees here in front of your home? Do you guys do that and is there consent? Can people say no, or...
Yeah. So depending on, depending on the scope of the project, for routine maintenance, we're, I don't think, I haven't looked at the Darby Paley Road situation, so I'm not really familiar with what, what happened there. But I believe that it was not part of routine maintenance. I believe there was some kind of a capital or new business.
They were putting in the new poles.
Right. So that's, so when we're doing, as Ed was saying earlier, when we're doing a, a capital construction project involving an upgrade of the lines, new poles, new wires, the, the tree maintenance is significantly different because, you know, we're, we have to put new poles, usually they're higher up. So those are, those are a different set of issues that we, you know, we don't really have, not really prepared to talk too much about that today, but that's, as Ed said, when we do have that situation in the township, we're going to address that specifically with the township. We don't have any plans that we know of right now involving that. So for routine maintenance, though, we do not, we don't consult personally, I don't consult with every homeowner on the work. We, we notify every homeowner in advance so they have an opportunity to call in with concerns before we do the work. But we're doing the maintenance, it's usually, you know, it's for the existing wires, it's usually what we've done in the past. So we cut, we prune the limbs back, they grow back and they, about the time we return for maintenance is when they start getting close again. So it's kind of something new, new within the last, within this year, we do have Davy Resource Group doing more of the planning for tree removals and we try to do those in conjunction with routine maintenance more. So when we do come through Radnor, you know, we will definitely let the township know and we try to coordinate some, we try to do some tree removals, like I said, the trees that are generally a benefit to the customer as well. So it's more, most time it's a win-win situation where it's a tree that's a danger to the, to the, to the wires. Could be a stone-dead tree, you know, if, if we're removing it, saves the homeowner a lot of, a lot of cost. So usually it's a mutual benefit when we are targeting tree removals.
Just one other quick question. If I had a tree in the township right-of-way that you guys decided needed to come down, would you let me know as, as the homeowner or because it's in the right-of-way, even though it's on my property, it still comes down?
We, we talk, yeah, so anytime we do a tree, anytime that a tree removal is, is identified, there's, we would get a customer agreement with that or we would, somebody would speak with them to be for the trees removed. We wouldn't just, we wouldn't just remove a tree without speaking with homeowner. But this is, I'm sorry, that last slide is just showing more examples and this is back to the point about planting the right tree in the right place. So this is what we want to avoid. From a utility point of view, we want, we want something that looks more like this where if, if there's tree planting, plant trees that are compatible, that do not get, will not reach the wire, or if they ever get close, it would be like a couple of pole clips. So there's bare minimum maintenance. This is a, you know, this is ideal situation. More stuff about planting the right tree in the right place, depending on how, if you're directly under the wires versus, you know, moving back 20 feet versus, you could get up to trees that are about 40 feet. If you're going to plant tall trees, you want to be about 50-foot back away from them at a minimum. So the whole, you know, we want to avoid future problems. We've got a lot of, you know, a lot of the condition, most of the conditions are existing, so we do the best we can. But if people are planting new trees, obviously you want them to work with the Shade Tree Commission and plant the right tree in the right place. We have a list of compatible trees on our website that we've got through Penn State. And in summary, we're, you know, we're trying to provide, PICO is, our job is to provide safe electrical service to our customers. It's a challenge in certain areas where we do have a lot of trees, like in Radnor. So we're working on best management practices. Of course, like I said, safety is the most important thing. And I already talked about those other issues, so. That's all. Any other questions or...
Thank you very much for that. Does anyone else have any other questions? I just have one other quick question. So, you know, here in the, in the township, and I know you work with the, with the township, would you be willing to work with our conservancy and some of the other groups and maybe our Shade Tree Commission, some of the other groups, like next time that you need to come in? You know, some of the other groups that, that have a vested interest in many of our trees. And I just want to ask Mr. Golis to, I know he has something he wants to share about work that he and his wife Jane are doing here in the township that might help inform your work as you move forward and you have projects in the township. Is that possible in, in the future, or...
Yes. We talked, we talked, we talked before Mr. and Mrs. Golis a little bit, but yes.
Oh, okay. Matt, do you want to?
Hi, Matt Golis, Shade Tree Commission, Planning Commission. Yeah, so I talked to the three PICO reps, Jane and I talked to them and explained that we're doing a survey, we're in the middle of it, and a lot of the survey material that we're finding shows interaction between PICO lines and trees we have. And so we're going to, we exchanged information. We're going, I'm going to show them how the app works and I think Radnor would be happy to share information we have about interventions with power and trees with you guys and, and with Chris, we'll have a point of contact person. Jane worked with, Jane worked with Jeff when she was on the Shade Tree Commission a decade ago. So I think we have, I think we can develop a, a good relationship and have some points of contact with PICO that, you know, maybe we didn't take advantage of before.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any other questions?
Just one other quick question. You talked about, you said 80% of the total outages are, that are tree, are vegetation-related or trees in contact with the wires. What is the outage percentage that was related to trees, you know, versus all, all causes? So is this 50%? And Ed, Ed knows that I bugged him many, many times about, every time I, every time we have a power outage in my neighborhood. But we've been getting a lot of power outages and I've been given the reports, you know, vegetation, tree. So what's, how much of the tree, how much of the overall outages are caused by trees?
Okay.
Not just vegetation?
Just, just to clarify, how many, well, vegetation's about a third of the overall outages. Of the vegetation-specific outages, about 80% are broken, uprooted trees.
Right. So that's less than, that'd be maybe a quarter of all outages are caused by trees? Something...
No, about, about 30, 30% or a little more are caused by trees.
About 30%, 30%?
Yeah, roughly.
So what are the causes of the...
Oh, the other causes?
The majority, the vast majority are, are equipment-related or et cetera, are other causes?
Yeah, so the 30, the 30% are across-the-board outages. In Radnor, I'm going to say it's higher, the, the tree-caused outages are higher than 30%. I can pretty safely say. Don't know exactly, but I know based on reliability reports we look at that there's higher than 30%. But the other causes are, there's equipment failures, there's squirrels that get into the equipment, there's pole hits from cars, there's wind and storms that, that, you know, just stuff comes down. So there's other, yeah, there's other causes.
Any other questions? Anyone else?
All right. Gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for waiting also. We appreciate you being here. Next, on to item E, discussion of Young Lung, Young Lungs at Play Program. Commissioner Abel, I'm going to let you introduce this.
Sure. This is a, this is a, a, an issue that I brought up back in 2018 and it was referred to both the Parks Board and the Board of Health. And I want to thank Chairman Campbell and his, and the members of the Parks Board as well as the Board of Health members for the discussions they've had over the past eight or so months. It opened up a lot of new ideas and issues for me. And one that came about, that I've seen in, not only in Delaware County, but in surrounding counties, is the Young Lungs at Play Program. And I believe we have a member from the state here today to provide a presentation on that, on that initiative.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for waiting. We appreciate it.
And thank Commissioner Abel for bringing this important health initiative up. And I want to thank Tammy as well for inviting me here today. I'm representing the Pennsylvania Department of Health. This is a Pennsylvania Department of Health-sponsored program. It's, in this region, it's coordinated by the Health Promotion Council and other agencies. And I'm actually with the Clean Air Council. Oh, that's nice. We'll put that up there. I'm with the Clean Air Council. And we've worked on smoke-free issues over 50 years. And this is a, a great initiative for your parks. As you'll see in your packet that I put together for you, tobacco-free parks. And what I want to discuss tonight is e-cigarette-free parks are important. Over 1,000 entities in Pennsylvania have adopted this Young Lungs at Play Program. It includes municipalities, the majority are municipalities, but other organizations like the YMCA's and other nonprofit organizations have adopted this program. So it's widely popular throughout the state. Tobacco-free parks are, are clean parks. We, as mentioned earlier by one of the citizens, a, a clean environment is one where we want our, our children to grow up in. And they, they perform much better in, in that type of environment. So in the parks where they're playing, in, either in a playground or even at the ballfields or, you know, jogging along the trails, you want to have a, a clean environment that, clean from the litter that's a problem, but also clean from secondhand smoke. The Clean Air Council's concerned about secondhand smoke. It's been deemed by the EPA as a known carcinogen. And the Surgeon General has also deemed secondhand smoke as, there are no safe levels of secondhand smoke. Especially those children and, and the elderly that are in the parks who are exposed to secondhand smoke are particularly vulnerable with its effects. So, and two, in the parks, if you have adults that are, are smoking or using e-cigarettes, kids model that, that behavior. And so what we want to try to do is eliminate that, that type of modeling in the parks that are there for play and, and exercise and healthy living. So as I mentioned, and here's, here's the sign that would go up. It's a quick and easy three-step process for the township. You could pass either a resolution or an ordinance. Some communities have, have made it an ordinance with fines for it. But something as simple as a resolution can be done here in a township that supports the, the program, the Young Lungs at Play Program. I've included wording for that in ordinance form, but again, the resolution form is, is very similar. So, so you get that, if you were to support the program, pass that resolution, there's a simple form to fill out as to the number of signs that you want for your parks. They're available in English as well as Spanish. And then the, all of the signs are free, provided by the Department of Health. Those, the signs are actually funded by the master settlement agreement dollars of the tobacco companies that were part of a settlement that they had lied about the effects of nicotine, actually. Which leads to, I did put in a flyer, I don't know where, whoops, here. I did put in some information about e-cigarettes that the American Lung Association has put together. This is especially of middle school and teenage kids, it has taken off as far as prevalence. It is not, to this point, regulated. The FDA is holding off until 2022 to take action on any regulation. So what a lot of entities are doing is banning the use of them until we find out what is actually in, in those products. And it's, it's like the Wild West with these companies, these different e-cigarette companies. The, the largest is Jules and they're, they look like a hard, a zip drive for a computer. They're small and the kids have taken off using those. I think it's up to 24% of high school kids have used e-cigarettes. So that's a major concern with that and that's why it would be great if you could include that in your policy. And what would happen, you would get a sticker that would say, no vaping placed on that sign, if you did include that as part of your resolution or ordinance or policy. Here for any other questions of the commissioners, the public might have on this.
Thank you.
E-cigarettes are already prohibited for anybody under 18 years old.
Yeah, under, well, but they get them.
Yeah, they still get them.
They get them. We, we educated, we did an education program at the Springton Middle School. And those kids, you know, we had a display board of e-cigarettes and we said, do you know about e-cigarettes? And they said, yes, we do. And so they know about them and they're using them.
Hey, does anyone else have any other questions? So I know that it's been, so it was referred to the Board of Health and it was referred, so this specific program or, I guess I'm a, so I'm a little confused. So I went on and I read, you know, about the program online and I don't disagree with, you know, the idea that children shouldn't be exposed to smoke and, you know, I am the daughter of pulmonologist, so, so I, you know, I, you know, I do, I do believe in that. I just, so I'm wondering, and I know that I heard, I think it went to the Board of Health and it went to our Parks and Rec Board. So I'm just wondering if somebody from the staff can share kind of what those recommendations were? And then I'm wondering, or I know we have two of our Parks and Rec representatives back there. Hi, guys. If you wanted to speak, you know, I'm not sure, I'm just trying to understand. So first of all, what would prevent us from enacting our own ordinance? So first of all, what would prevent us from enacting our own ordinance? So I, so basically, all this program is, is putting up signs, saying that we're part of this program. Like, we could enact our own ordinance, put up our own signs. We could...
You could very well do that, but this is, it's branding that the Pennsylvania Department of Health is trying to do with the whole program.
Also, it's paid for by the cigarette companies, so why would we...
Exactly, yeah.
Why would we spend our own money on it?
I'm just asking a question.
Okay.
Is that all right? So I don't know if, Chris and Bill, do you, either one of you want to speak too?
Thanks, Lisa. Chris Campbell, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Board. At the request of Commissioner Abel, we had a presentation from Young Lungs probably about nine months ago. And we had an opportunity to discuss as a board, probably two of our meetings invited public comments. We decided as a board, with all due respect to what Commissioner was trying to accomplish, that although we certainly don't support smoking in parks, we don't, we didn't see it as a problem. We haven't gotten complaints. We haven't had issues. And most of us, as well as feedback from Tammy, spent a lot of time in the parks with our kids, sports teams, sports competitions, things like that. So we did, we did not take any action as a board. We felt that although Commissioner Booker thinks that it's free, the signs are free, but not the posts, and not the installation, not the maintenance.
Right, right. Understood.
We would have to pay for all that.
I get, that's, that's true.
So the long-term maintenance of this, the enforcement, the inability to really enforce this ban, if it were, if it were forwarded, we just decided not to address it. No recommendation was made to, to bring a recommendation to board commissioners.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris.
Just a quick question. And I spoke with a colleague earlier today. Does this mandate that if a park is no smoking, that you have to have a certain area that is designated smoking?
No. In fact, it's, it's recommended that that might be the case. And if, I can go back to about the signs themselves, just looking at your, your park here, next to the township building, entering the ballfields, there's a post there already. The sign would screw right into that, that post that says, "No golfing." And then on the other side, where the, the kids' park is, you can screw into that sign underneath the other signs, the existing signs. So it's, it's, there's not that much cost involved with it.
So are we restricted from doing anything on top of this? Like levying fines, or?
No, no. You are allowed to levy fines if you so desire.
And are we allowed to, if something happened where we're like, this doesn't necessarily fit in with what we want to do, we could take away? Or is there, it's basically just free signs?
Well, it's, it's free signs as long as it's a tobacco-free zone in the entire area of your parks.
So no, no, smokeless, tobacco, no dip or chew or any of that as well?
Exactly, yes.
So I'll just say from my standpoint, because I have a kid in Little League and smoking, it's not a big problem, but there have been issues where people smoke, and I think it's disgusting. I smoked for many years, so maybe I'm a reformed smoker. I was at one fall ball event where an umpire, I mean, just, an umpire ejected somebody for smoking, not me. An umpire did that. So I think it's noxious. I don't think kids should be around it. So if that's a case where the whole park becomes smoke-free, I guess I would, I would be in favor of it. But not to say that we can't take additional steps to levy fines. And, and it's easy to point to a sign and say, "Hey, don't smoke." But on top of that, to maybe levy fines with people that, that break that law. Thanks.
Correct. And some, some communities have sign or fees, or if you're caught smoking. The City of Chester in particular, I think it's a $300 fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, and I know that some of the people here smoke, but, and I take like Main Line Health, for instance, their whole campus is not smoking. And I understand, like, it's an addiction. It was very, very difficult for me to quit. And a lot of people in this room may attest, I have no willpower whatsoever. But if I was able to quit, I think anybody can. So to have a smoke-free camp, to go one step further and have a smoke-free campus on all the Radnor property, it's, again, something that I think we should look into.
Very good. Thank you.
And Sean, I agree. I spend a lot of time on our, at our parks, watching Little League baseball, or just going out to play with the kids. You know, my ward, I think, has the most parks out of any ward in the township. And there is smoking in our parks. I've been at multiple baseball games where parents sit behind the, the backstop and smoke. And while they claim they could be a safe distance away, you know, with the air, it travels. And, you know, as a parent, I smell it, and I know the kids are smelling it. So, I mean, we don't, we don't allow smoking in our restaurants. We don't allow smoking on planes. Well, at most restaurants, you can't smoke. There has to be a percentage. But why, why would we not make our parks a safe and clean environment for our kids?
Yeah, I was at Clemecron, and someone was smoking a cigar. And I was there with my three-year-old. I'm like, this is just, this is, it's noxious. It's wrong.
Come, come to Philipone Park on Saturdays at 10:00 AM.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I want to look at this a little bit more, and if you can email me stuff, but this is, I don't know if this is going to be the exact fit, per se, but I think this is definitely a step in the, in the right direction. And, and I am for limiting any kind of smoking, you know, in, in our parks. So thank you.
And just to respond to the question signage, I mean, as you pointed out, we have signs all over our parks with, with posts that this sign could be included to. You know, I envisioned it almost as if the sign would be put on the backstop, where I've seen that done in the past.
Yeah, on chain and fence.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's plenty of places, and it's just a reminder to people, because it's, you know, similar to our no dogs in the park ban, where everybody has a dog in the park. It's just kind of a reminder to parents and to people that, you know, please don't smoke where our kids are playing.
Exactly.
I'm kind of inclined to agree with the planning, with the Parks Commission that no action be taken at this point. It's, seems overbroad because it applies to snuff and tobacco that does not produce any smoke. And it also applies only to tobacco, as opposed to any, anything that people are smoking.
So in order to participate, would we, so I'm, you know, just looking at this for the first time this evening. It would have to, it has to be the entire park, and it has to be all tobacco products in the can, in order to participate with that. So we, if we passed something that was a little less restrictive, we wouldn't be part of this program.
Yeah, unfortunately, not. I mean, it's, this is ideal, again, it's branding. So you can see this, these in Springfield Township. You can see these in other Providence Township, in Swarthmore, Upland Borough.
Yeah, I saw the list. I saw the list you have online.
You know, it's taken off throughout the Delaware County here as well.
Can I ask, I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Cohen, but do you mind, do you want to comment, or?
I'm sure, I'll comment. So in my 20 years of being here, I have interacted heavily with the sports community, Radnor Wayne Little League, Radnor Soccer Club, Radnor Boys and Girls Lacrosse. And smoking has never been a topic that I've heard a lot about. But with that being said, if it truly is an issue, and the board is looking to incorporate this program, the only thing I would suggest is just to be mindful of additional signage in our parks, because we do have a lot of signage in our parks. It's signage that has to be maintained, has to be organized. So having a lot of things in random locations could become cluttered. So I would just want to be mindful of that. And in addition, I, I would just say that the signs maybe need to be updated in some way, so that they do include electronic cigarettes, smoking, vaping, everything. I don't know if there's a way to capture that under one umbrella, because that is a big issue today. I have a soon-to-be middle schooler, and I know it's a big topic. And sticking a sticker on the sign, I'm not sure what they'll do with that sticker, but I'm sure it won't be on very long. So that would be my only concern. But I think, you know, obviously, smoking isn't something that runs parallel to healthy lifestyles and parks. But with that being said, again, it's just never been an issue that's been brought to my attention until Commissioner Abel had done so about a year ago.
Okay. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, so...
Well, sir, I mean, just if I can respond to Tammy. So for me, I'll just say, it actually kind of has been an issue, but I don't know who to go to. I'm not going to call the police if I see someone smoking a cigarette. It's not that, that much of a crime where I want to call the police. But I think at least if someone's, you know, definitely having some kind of fine will definitely send a message. But having just something that if someone's uncomfortable, talking to somebody, at least pointing to a sign, you know, kind of nodding, alluding to that, hopefully that can send a message of just not, not near the kids. And it's, you know, I mean, I, I'm a fair user of our park system, and that's one of the great things for Radnor. I just don't think it adds anything to the parks. And when it comes to smokers' rights, or people wanting to live healthy and not have to breathe something noxious in, I take the side of the people that don't want to breathe something noxious and, and proven to be unhealthy in. So that's, you know, my, my opinion on, on that. But I, I do understand what you're saying. I guess as far as like, you know, speaking up, I, you know, where, I guess I'll ask either Tammy or Bob, where do you go to? It's not even like a finable thing. They go to their commissioners or make a comment, and then, and then they kind of move on.
It's one on the police side, we don't have anything to enforce on. I think the intention is that you would bring this to people's attention, that there are kids that are playing in the parks, that there is an impact on their actions. So I think that is the intent of this program, because, you know, police aren't going to be running out there, because more than likely, they're done. But I think this is to bring a, attention to what, what occurs at, at the fields. So I think that's part of what the intentions behind, you correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Abel, but I think that's what the intention is, to bring this out, that people are aware of their, what the result of their actions are.
You're, you're correct on that. And the signage is self-enforcing. I mean, as the commissioner said, you can sort of point to the sign and say, you know, it's for the kids. And smokers are respectful, and they'll, they'll put it out.
I think they're, they're used to it at this point, you know.
Okay. So we are, so we don't have anything to vote on. We don't have anything. Commissioner Abel, would you like, should we consider, consider an ordinance? I mean, I think it would have to be an ordinance, can't be a resolution. And then we can put it on an agenda, and then...
I think it can be a resolution.
Can it be done by resolution? Wouldn't it have to be an ordinance?
Well, if you're going to have any kind of fines or penalties, or you're going to write a ticket for something like this, you would need to do an ordinance. You want to just have a policy.
Do we, do we need fines right off the bat? Can we see how it works?
No, no, no. Let's, let's, let's put some fines on it. Let's, let's make it illegal. I mean, you shouldn't do it. I am for, if we're going to do this, you have the signs, have, have a penalty, and let's get it out of the parks.
All right. So I guess the best thing to do would be to create an ordinance, put it on the agenda, then we can let, you know, then the community can hear about it, the community can know, we can hear from more people. You know, I, I don't know if anyone really even knew what this was to be about tonight. But until we have something as a board to react to, you know, then we can share that with the community, and people who are, feel one way or the other can certainly come out. I mean, is that, you know, or, or do we want to talk about it again and develop an ordinance? You know?
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry, Lisa. Like, yeah, let's do an ordinance, let's add everything that we want in this, so we're not discussing it 10 times. If we need to run it by Board of Health or Parks, again, to, just not to do some kind of full study, but at least see if they want to add something to it, you know, and then we can take a look at it. But I think fines should be there, e-vaping should be there. Other things that I don't necessarily know about, you know, but that, just add different, you know, just different input, because, you know, there's, I mean, like I said, I smoked for many years. I mean, you know, I don't necessarily know what I don't know, but hearing from the different stakeholders, like Tammy, or our parks, or our health, I think can, we do it once, and we, it's complete, and then we just go from there.
No, no, I appreciate those comments. I think the Parks Board and Board of Health have both weighed in that, weighed in their opinion, and they probably don't want to see it again. So I think it's ready to come before us to make a decision.
Then, then we should ask some of the residents for their opinion, what they would like to add, or if they're totally against it. But, you know, I think a playground, I'll speak for Clemecron, with swing sets, gear for three-year-olds, I don't think smoking is, is any place for that. So I would be interested to hear from the mothers and fathers of those kids, if there's anything else they'd like to add.
And so far, neighbors who knew this was coming up tonight, it was unanimous support for Radnor Township to be part of this program.
Well, we can debate an ordinance. I mean, I myself, I might, you know, be, I might prefer something that's a little less restrictive. I mean, certainly no playgrounds, no bleachers, you know, but, you know, I don't know to completely, you know, our parks are acres and acres, so, you know, I, I don't know. But we can certainly consider it. Also, are we obligated to put up a certain number of signs? Maybe could we just put up one sign?
It's, it's at, upon your request, however many signs you need, we can get for you. So, and free, free of charge to the township.
Okay.
I have a question for staff and John. Two things I heard at the Board of Health meeting. One was that one of the MDs on the Board of Health had done a bit of research and was not able to find any support or substantiation that secondhand smoke is an issue in an outdoor environment. But the other question is, another one of the Board of Health members actually did some law research, and this is probably the risk of amateur lawyers, but he found the thing that as a public entity, we would be required to have posted smoking areas if the park was non-smoking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure whether that's required or not. I know some townships that have adopted no smoking in their parks, and it's the whole park. They haven't set aside any areas. I don't know whether that's a, I'd have to look at it.
Would you please?
One of the things we could do is, you could, if you were going to do an ordinance, the penalty would be like a ticket, a minor type of it. Or you could have a resolution. We could, we could put both in front of you, and you can decide how you want to go with. The resolution would have to be an amendment to the park and rec rules that are in place, Tammy. So there are some existing park and rec rules about, you have an ordinance on the books, which currently prohibits things like hunting, and alcohol, and trapping, and there's a laundry list in there. So if you're going to put it in ordinance, it would go in there. But, you know, if the board's inclined, we could do both. You could have a resolution, you could have an ordinance, and then decide how restrictive you want to be. And I'd have to look, John, at that question regarding whether it's mandatory that you have an area set aside.
Would it have to be every single park in the township?
I, I mean, you could, I think ideally that, that would be the best situation, but I'd have to check to see, I mean, whether...
You know, there are some parks that, you know, don't have playgrounds, or have baseball fields, or things like that. Like, could there be, I'm not saying make a smoker park, but, you know, I mean, you know, I guess I'm a little reluctant to disenfranchise, you know, a whole group of people.
Amazingly, the Montgomery County park system adopted it, including the trails. And so... And so, and again, it's, it is for awareness, as, as was mentioned. And, you know, the signage, again, is fairly self-enforcing. And it's, it's just, it's better that all are included.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. And I'm also available if you need us back for further information, or you have my card if you need additional information. Certainly contact.
Okay. Can you get back to, let us know if it has to, has to be every single park? If you could share that, I guess, with Commissioner Abel, if you've been in touch with him. That'd be great.
No, I think the information should go, probably go to Tammy or someone on staff.
Okay.
Very great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So John, for the next meeting, I guess, can you give, you know, we can have some options or figure out exactly, and then kind of debate it as...
Bob and I were just putting together the two options.
Okay.
And I'll have to address, John, Commissioner Nagel's question also. But we'll, we'll get something in front of the board to, to look at, and then you can decide how you want to deal with it.
Great. Thank you. Okay, on to Resolution 2019-60, awarding contract B-19003, Radnor Township Park Improvements at Bo Connor Park and Warren Philippone Park. Mr. Nocini or Ms. Cohen? Who's that?
Yes. Resolution 2019-60, awarding contract B-19003, park improvements at Bo Connor Park, Warren Philippone Park. This is a project that was approved within the bond and the borrowing, the park and, park and trail bond back in 2015, 2016. So this is, this is a funded project that entails both parks. It includes the parking lot at Warren Philippone Park, the tennis courts at Warren Philippone Park, updates to, upgrades to the fencing at the ballfields at both parks. It also includes the basketball courts over at Bo Connor Park. There's also repairs to the sidewalks that'll be done along South Devon Avenue. There's a small retaining wall that will be installed behind the A Field at Bo Connor Park that will help mitigate some of the, the water flow that's coming into the park there that goes right into the dugout areas. There will be an up, upgrade to the dugout areas at Warren Philippone Park as well. That'll include, like a fenced-in style dugout. There's also a pickleball court that will be dedicated now within Bo Connor Park that includes a rehab to an existing cement slab that's within the park, as well as a crosswalk right into Warren Philippone Park. It's definitely been long awaited. This is a park that hasn't received attention for many, many years, well over probably 20, 25 years. So something exciting for us to, to get moving along with. So we kindly request the board. This is an award to a company called Gessler Construction. They were the only bidder on the project, and it would be in the amount of $750,000, which is within the budget of the bond that had been allocated. I appreciate your consideration on that tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-60? Any discussion or questions on this?
Well, just wanted to note, Tammy, you and Steve were actually able to bring the full project in, including the extras for the budgeted amount. Thank you.
I just had one question. What's the status of the Fenimore Woods project?
It's in the process of getting ready to be bid.
We just approved that, like, in our two meetings ago.
Approved the authorization to, to prepare it for bid.
It's not under construction yet?
I wish it was, Commissioner Booker.
So, so if this passes tonight, what's, what's the timeframe?
We will reach out to Gessler and start to have that discussion. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, overstate, but I think the goal is to get the project started sometime in the early fall at the latest, maybe even August if we can. So if we receive authorization tonight, we'll begin those conversations tomorrow and identify a timeline. So I know we've already been talking with the sports community about the impact and what, what will be happening. And we've already discussed backup plans and alternatives and things in, in the event that the park's going to be shut down for most of fall.
So soccer unlikely in the fall at Philippone?
We have relocation plan in place.
The pickleball court, standard size, or is, or is it the smaller version?
No, it's within the standard guidelines of pickleball. The, sorry, United States Pickleball Association.
And that's a big deal to a lot of the neighbors around there. There was talk about adding a crosswalk. Is that part of this project, or is that a separate project?
It's part of the project. It was bid as part of the project, and it was included.
So we'll have the crosswalk going from the park to Arbordale?
At Arbordale.
And then new curb cuts?
Yes.
Perfect. And then on the replacement of the fencing, so when you replace the fencing, and you have to add all the new signs back up on the fencing, would it be too much just to add a Young Lungs at Play sign?
Hey, maybe we can get the contractor to do those ones.
Any other comments? Any staff comment?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would just like to recognize Tammy for the work that she's done on this, for Steve, for his input, as well as Parks Board for their involvement in this as well. They do put a lot of time into these, and just want to recognize them for all their hard work and efforts.
Absolutely. Is there any public comment, gentlemen from the Parks Board, anything to add? Do you give this project a thumbs up? All right. Okay, seeing no comments, I will call the vote on Resolution 2019-60. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passed at six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. All right. Ordinance 2019-06, adoption, approving a lease agreement between the Township of Radnor and Willow's Park Preserve. Mr. Rice, do you want to share some of the edits that have been made?
Yes. As the, the board recalls, this was introduced two weeks ago, and there were a couple of changes made at the meeting. One had to do with insurance requirements for the lease going forward, and the second had to do with the appointments to the Willow's Park Board. So that was advertised. And there were some additional comments made at the meeting. Since it was advertised, there were two additional issues that came from the commissioners, which I've added to the lease. You, you all have copies of the additional changes, and I'll just briefly summarize what was clarified. In Section 4, there was additional language acknowledging that WPP would seek arboretum status, and that to the extent that WPP wanted to extend programming, community-related programming, not private events or weddings, into the park, that they would have to comply with the existing township code, existing township rules and regulations that any other entity would have to comply with, who wanted to use any other part of the park. So it was just to clarify that they have a lease area, which is on the map, which is part of the ordinance, and anything else, they would have to go through whatever the normal reservation policy permits that would, excuse me, any other group would have to do for community programming. So that was as a result of some comments at the meeting. And then the other thing that was added to this is just an hours of operation provision in Section 7 about access to the park. There is a non-disturbance clause in here that WPP would operate during construction and any deliveries in accordance with the township's current code requirements. And they would not interfere or cause disturbance to any adjacent residents. The thing that came up since the last meeting is that the township has on the books a noise ordinance, which essentially says that from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., there cannot be any construction activity. So that, that noise, anything that would be related to that or deliveries to the site, is going to be subject to that existing code. So that was also added to this. I, I think I provided the code requirements to the, to the board over the weekend. So there are the two additional clarifications that came from the board between two weeks ago and, and, and tonight. So other than that, I believe WPP is here, and I, I believe they don't have any issues with those changes. It's been advertised for adoption tonight. It's still, I mean, we've been through some of the other changes from the original lease and from the lease from last year, but it's basically in front of the board for final action tonight.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I will call for a motion to, for adoption, Ordinance 2019-06.
So moved in a second.
Okay. Any Commissioner comments to the changes or the lease?
John, so the, the new language, was that included in the reports put on the back table?
No. 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 What, what, what is on the table is what was advertised, and then what I received from two or three of the commissioners last week, I added and sent, and the board has had that over the weekend to take a look at. But it's those two, basically those two paragraphs, Jake. Paragraph four as to, you know, any other programming that would occur outside of the leased area.
And with that language, would a, you know, if there was programming done outside the lease area, would, if that, to have that program occur, would residents have to be restricted from that area?
Well, no. Well, I mean, I, what, what happens when the Boy Scouts use the park? I mean, I guess if the Boy Scouts or some other nonprofit is using the park, I assume residents aren't going to get into the middle of the Boy Scouts' operation or any other nonprofit. So...
And the park, so the park is not closed?
No.
To other people? The park wouldn't be closed? I mean, should we just read what it is? I mean, it says during the, so this was added to Section 4, the first paragraph. During the term of this lease agreement, the township acknowledges and agrees that WPP will seek arboretum status for applicable areas of the park. Subject to the applicable township code and rules, regulations, and requirements of the township as to park use, the WPP will have access to other areas of the park for the sole purpose of conducting and administering its community-related programming initiatives, such as initiatives to be open and accessible to all Radnor residents. So there's no exclusivity with regards to this. I think that they are just trying to clarify that there is no exclusivity, that no one will be excluded, that the park will not be shut down for WPP programs, which could be bird watching, or a tour of the arboretum, or, you know, I, I don't know, something else.
Well, it, it could be excluding, because if you were there with your family, just enjoying the park, sitting on a chair and, and talking, and there's a program in that area, you're not, you're not going to stay there. I mean, I, yes, they're saying you can be welcome.
Well, there are programs in the parks all the time.
Yeah, and...
Do you leave when there's a program in the park?
No, but the idea is that there's not going to be more than what is, what was currently there.
So at, at the mansion, they are restricted to 25 major private events per year at the mansion. We've all seen the red line drawn around the mansion. It, those events do not extend beyond the red line. This is if they're having a community program, they would work with, they've already agreed that they would work with Tammy and make sure there's nothing else going on the township's hosting. You know, I, I don't think that anyone, mean people, could join in. They could sit there, they could leave, they could stay in the park or go to another place. The park won't be closed. Nobody is not, the park is, will continue to be accessible at all times. There are, there are programs there all the time. The Conservancy has programs there. You know, I've seen Eddie, what is it? There's, like, outside, LL Bean has programs there. I mean, there are programs in the park all the time.
But the, the slippery slope is, it could be opened up in the future to programs all the time that neighbors would not...
But Tammy, they have to go through Tammy. They ha, it says that they are subject to the, the applicable township code and rules, regulations, and requirements of the township as to park use.
Okay, so, I mean, regardless of the township, if so, if the township approves it, the residents still don't get a say in it? Like, they want to be able to access the park?
They don't get a say now anyway.
But it's not being used. They have access to it now.
Can I just ask Jake a question? So how would this park be different from, say, Anki Field, right? I mean, if I'm using the baseball field and someone Little League has use of it, I mean, I can't sit there. What are the special, you know, the special rights that the Willow's would have or should have, making it different than any other park for any other stakeholders is my, my question.
Willow's is different than Anki. People don't go there to play baseball. They go there to enjoy.
Well, I mean, in, in, a family activity is a family activity in the sense of if it's Little League or taking a nature walk. I mean, you know, my idea of an activity may be different than your idea, but it's still public land, and, and if you do want to use it in some way, am I correct, that you do need a, a permit or some kind of permission? I, I, trust me, I totally get what you're saying.
I just have concern, long-term, that neighbors are going to lose the access that they have now to the areas that they enjoy.
Would you like to respond to that, ladies, or gentlemen, or the WPP?
Evelyn, as she walks up. John, I look at this, isn't it similar to Hartford Park, where we have Mainline School Night in the mansion? And Mainline School Night is operating, but the public can still go into the Mainline School Night building, although I guess not go into certain cla, I don't, I don't know. What's, how does that work for, for Hartford? And is this the same thing?
Well, I, I don't think Mainline School Night has, well, maybe they do. I'm not familiar with that. I, I don't believe they're outside of the, you know, the building with, with much programming. I mean...
No, but, but they're inside with programming.
But they're, but they're inside, and it doesn't restrict anybody from going to the park, or walking around the building, or anything like that.
Or even going in the building, because people use, use the bathrooms in the bu, yeah.
Right. I mean, they, you know, they, but this is, you're going to have this entity in the mansion, so they're going to, you know, have a prominent place there. But they can't do any programming outside of the mansion unless they get permits. So I don't think, I mean, we don't know what all the programming might be, but I, I look at it as the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, any other nonprofit that wants a part of the park to do something in, that you, you permit it now. I mean, it's really no different.
The township, when they have the pumpkin festival. I've been to that, like, twice. It's awesome, but it's...
I mean, there may be more activity with this, with this group in the mansion. I mean, that, but that's, you know, they're going to provide public programming that the township doesn't currently provide. And that's a part of their nonprofit mission, and they have to do that for, under their 501(c)(3) status. So this doesn't let them have weddings, or bands, or set up a stage down in the park. You know, it's, it's community programming. But I'll let, I'll let them speak for themselves.
Thank you. So as John said, it is community programming. And the reason that we made these changes since our meeting on the 10th was to address some of the concerns that it would be, there would be limited access to the park during these types of events. That is not the purpose of the WPP. And in fact, in its application for 501(c)(3) status, it specifically reported to the IRS that they are committed to the restoration of the historic mansion, and ensuring it remains open and available for the public's continued use and enjoyment. In no way is any of their activities intended to restrict use of the park. What they are looking for are things as, you know, Madam President stated, bird watching, guided trail walks, possibly a tai chi class that would be open to all community residents. And to, to try to take this to the extreme and say that, well, if I'm attending the park and there's a tai chi class, I've now restricted my use. Well, if you attend the park with your family and you put a picnic blanket down, and your family is taking up that space, then you're restricting that space for others to use as well. So there is no intention, again, to limit this to any type of private use, or for any private benefit to the organization itself. It is simply their mission, their focus, is to take a structure that has essentially been left to deteriorate for the last, since about 2012, and restore it so that it can once again become the jewel of Radnor Township, and also provide community program. once again become the jewel of Radnor Township and also provide community program and that at times may use, have access to other areas of the park, but that access would always be non-exclusive and it would always be pursuant to the rules and regulations of the township.
And the other addition to Section seven is the WPP acknowledges and agrees that it will access and use lease premises, lease premises in such a manner as to not interfere with nor cause disturbance to Radnor residents using the park and or residing at or near the park. So, that is, you know, and it goes on, notwithstanding the foregoing and accepting an emergency event in the lease premises. So, you know, they're saying specifically that is not their intent, it is written into the lease, and I would say that if you violate that, then you're in breach of the lease.
In breach of the lease, exactly. The other thing to be mindful of is that the lease agreement does contemplate and actually require that the township and the WPP will meet on an annual basis aside from if they have to go to Parks and Rec to ask for, you know, a permit for a special event. They will meet to coordinate all of the programming that will happen at the mansion, whether that be community-based programming such as the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts or some other community group wanting to use the mansion, existing township events that already take place at the park, as well as its own other types of public and private events that will happen there. And also that any of the contemplated private events that are being used to offset the operating expenses, that they will never take priority over existing township events. So, for example, the Pumpkin Festival that happens, that date would be set and a private event could not be scheduled on that same date to interfere with the township events at the Willows.
We have two board liaisons, I know one's in the audience right there, and I don't think there's any lack of communication, or there has not been any lack of communication from the Willows Park Preserve Board with, on top of the liaisons with our board. So, I'll say that I'm comfortable with, with the back and forth at this time.
Thank you.
Is there any other commissioner comments?
Yeah, I have a couple more. And, you know, first I want to thank, I want to thank the WPP. You know, my questions aren't a, an attack on the WPP. You know, I think I might be the only commissioner up here who's attended every workday there, who's been part of, you know, tours and part of the discussion throughout this whole time period. My questions are just, you know, while I support the efforts and I hope it's a success, I also want to be able to protect the township, the taxpayers' money and protect the, protect the park, which the residents have asked and said that's a priority for them. So, I mean, these questions are just questions that they've asked me and that I'm trying to get answers and so they're comfortable. But the issue on the terms of the lease, John, I think you, before you mentioned 29 years is considered gifting the property?
Yeah, if you exceed.
Anything over 29 years.
Yeah, if you exceed that, it could be viewed by the State Department of Revenue as a transfer, as a sale. So, this is a.
So, this is 28 years. Are there benchmarks?
It's 25 with it.
25 with three automatic.
Three automatic, one renewal period.
In, in essence, 28 years. Is there any benchmarks included in this to where, I know before you said you hope to have raised the money and start construction in four years. If you don't do that in four years, like, what happens to the property? Or do you guys have access to it for 25 years and there doesn't have to be anything done to the property?
No, that would not actually be the case. So, if you address your attention to Section 8A of the lease agreement, the WPP is required to make commercially reasonable efforts to complete construction within four years and to initiate Phase One improvements within six months of commencement of the lease agreement. If commercially reasonable efforts, if they were to sit back for the next four years and do nothing in terms of the improvements, alterations, or additions, they are in default and in breach of the lease under Section 15A 3. If they fail to perform the conditions and terms of the agreement, upon 30 days' notice, the township may terminate the lease and the township would benefit from any and all of the improvements to the premises that were already made.
Books.
Because the improvements will remain the township.
So, what's considered reasonable efforts?
Well, I would say that sitting around for 28 years would not be commercially reasonable efforts. So, you would have to see some progress in terms of both fundraising activities and construction.
Okay.
The lease is structured in such a way, and if you look at it in terms of even Exhibit A, to the lease in which it outlines Phase One and Phase Two, it is contemplated and it is the intention of the lease that the construction will be done in according to available funds. So, specific benchmarks are difficult to do because this is a fundraising effort and it is one in which the WPP is taking a lion's share responsibility for raising the funds for those improvements. Now, they have made significant strides already. They have approximately 1.2 million in donation and charitable contribution to initiate not only their operating, but to move forward with Phase One. They've already issued a RFP, they've had three out of four architects respond to that and they're sifting through that. So, these movements have been made to make those commercially reasonable efforts.
No, and again, my comments are not an indictment on the WPP. I think I've nominate, or referred a couple of the members that are currently on the board or had previously, previously been on the board. I voted to appoint two of the members on the board, so I've, you know, I'm hoping that this is a success, but I want to be able to make sure that, you know, we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So, you know, I was comfortable with a 10-year lease with an additional 10 years on top of that because that 10 years, we would have a better idea if you guys are successful, are able to be successful in raising that money. 25 years, I think, just opens it up to a lot of vagueness.
So, the 10-year term and one of the reasons, that wasn't the original lease. And then, what the WPP, one of the reasons that they came before the board back in February, I think it was at this time, they came back and what they were receiving was a response from a lot of potential contributors to the project was that 10 years did not give them much assurance that any money that they would put into this project would remain for the purpose of this project to continue. Because the mission is that you're going to improve this mansion, make the improvements, the alterations, and additions so that the community programming that's intended to take place there can actually happen. So, what, where they have feedback they were getting from some of the significant, people that were significantly interested in funding the project was, well, if I give that money and in 10 years this lease is over, I have no assurance that the money that was used to the improvements of this mansion is going to be utilized for the community programming that I'm hoping to support. Because what I want to support is this mansion being open for Radnor residents for generations to come. There was also issues when they started to explore grant funding in such a limited time period. Grant funding from both public and private foundations, from, you know, government sources, they really do require following the money and there are terms and conditions that are placed on a lot of these grants that are ultimately awarded. And that limited, more limited timeframe on the term of the lease was becoming problematic for their fundraising efforts.
So, the only time period that was, that we could use is 25 years?
The 25 years was a, something that the WPP had brought forward as a potential for extending the lease agreement and that was through back and forth on the lease negotiations. That was something that seemed to be acceptable to the majority of the commissioners.
And then, final, final question is, where do we stand now on the 1.6 million from the township? You know, my, my view is that we should be waiting until the WPP has raised the funds before we start spending the 1.6.
So, under the lease agreement, as I said earlier, there's a six-month kind of benchmark, as you would term it, for the WPP to begin construction on the Phase One improvements, which is roof replacement. And there is a year benchmark on the township to begin construction on, or I'm sorry, not construction, but the improvements to the utility service infrastructure leading up to the mansion. So, it would be our hope that the township would begin that within a year of commencement of the lease agreement.
And Steve or Bob, when they say we have to start utility work, does that mean we're just, are we, are we shovel on the ground or are we just talking about it? Like, are we spending real dollars on that?
I'll defer to the solicitor on whether, what the one year means. Do we have to be complete? Do we have to be just started or what?
It's the same language it deals with, the initiation by WPP of their work. If their work is delayed, the township's work on, is going to be delayed. But there's a one-year benchmark in here and a six-month for them to begin the utility upgrades. Not to complete it, it's not specific. I mean, they're going to need the utility upgrades when they're ready to use the building for programming. So, you know, that, those, I see those, their six months and the township one year is sort of a moving time period depending on how quickly they get going. But it's to begin the upgrades, Steve, water and sewer, basically.
All right. I don't have any further questions, but before, before we get to public comment, I would be interested to hear from the Parks Board. I know that they've sent letters in.
Well, I think we should let the rest, if there's any other commissioners that have comments?
I did, I said, when all the questions are done here, before we get to public comment, I would like to hear from the Parks Board and then also from staff on their views.
On the 25-year issue, was it the impression or was it conveyed by potential donors that the 25 years or the more than 10 years basically related to the length of time that a real property improvement generally would last, for instance, bathrooms last 20, you know, 20, or kitchen, so if you're putting something in, it'll last 20, 30 years, or in this case it could be, you know, high-end construction could last 50, 70, 100, 200 years. But that, that 10 years wasn't, didn't fit with what the, the value of the improvements was.
Absolutely.
So, that's what, that's what they were getting at, the 10 years?
That was partial, part of it, absolutely, is that they were looking at the value of what they were going to be, what their money was going to be used for, right? What their contribution was going to be used for. But also, it really was this concern as well that they wanted to ensure that the, their contribution went to the overall mission of the WPP, which isn't just centered on improving the mansion, it really is centered on this idea of creating a community hub for Radnor residents. And looking at it in such a finite period seemed to create a lot of hesitation on the part of potential funders.
I don't quite understand that because what do they think? The township is going to take it away, you know, at the end of 10 years from the public? I, it seems to me that it would be tied with the, with the, with the, with the real property improvements and that's what they wanted the length to kind of match that.
And, and that was absolutely a concern that was expressed. However, there, you know, if the lease was only 10 years and the township were to take it back, then the township could use it in another manner and it could be that it sells the property to, you know, a private funder or, you know, a private, for private benefit or used as a catering business or something of that nature.
Hmm, hmm. In which case, the benefit could be interpreted to, nor to a private.
Yes.
Entity.
Yes.
But certainly the township is not going to turn it over to, you know, I, I, you know, I just find that hard. All right. And then, I think that the issue that we were struggling with is this issue of access and I think it's addressed, the access, it's, this is not, would not, it does, I don't read it to say that this prohibits people from using the park or keeps them out of the building.
Absolutely.
But I'm not 100% sure, but.
Absolutely. So, the idea for the WPP is that once the building is in a position where it can be open for the public, you know.
People would be allowed.
People are allowed and in fact, and Tish Long, the president of the board, would be able to speak to this, to the direct programming intentions, but my understanding is that they intend to have the mansion open and available for the public to tour, to, you know, make use of the pond viewing rooms seven days a week. The only exception would be that up to 25 private events.
Right.
That would be held. And again, those are limited in duration. You're looking at, you know, for most of these private events in total of the year, even if they were to use all 25, maybe 125 hours.
Yeah. And what if the construction takes five or six or seven years and it is reasonable efforts, but people could be excluded during that period then?
So, the way that it is structured, if you look at the Exhibit A and you have the Phase One and the Phase Two, so the Phase One is really to secure the envelope of the mansion. Roof replacement, make sure that there is no more further deterioration to the property itself. Phase Two is kind of a list that's built on some necessary improvements and then some that are termed more of vanity-type of improvements. So, the hope for the WPP is that they'll continue to fundraise so that they can make, hopefully, all of them, but obviously, they're hopeful that they can start their community programming initiatives well prior to completion of all of, you know, the enumerated projects in Exhibit A.
And that makes sense. I'm not sure that, that says that specifically, though. So, I don't know, I guess, I think we can interpret, read that in, but I understand that makes sense. And then, the issue is, you referenced the default provisions, 15A. So, are there any other events of default other than reasonable efforts to complete the project contemplated in four years or are there other terms that?
There's actually, there are other terms. For one, there's an insolvency provision, which if the WPP were to go bankrupt, obviously the lease is terminated. The WPP is restricted if they sublet the lease premises or assign the lease in violation of the provisions, if they fail to maintain the proper insurance required pursuant to Section 10, if they fail to perform or observe any of the other covenants, terms, or conditions contained in this lease, and such failure continues for more than 30 days after written notice thereof, they are deemed in breach and the township would have the option to terminate and ask, the, all rights and responsibilities of the WPP at that point would cease, they would have to leave the building, but the improvements and any betterments that were made to the premises during the, the time period that the WPP was performing construction would remain the township's.
Now, it's contemplated that the WPP will upgrade and improve and operate the facility and keep it in tip-top condition.
Yes.
Is there anything in there that addresses should it not be kept in top condition or repair in 15 years, et cetera, that would also be covered under those provisions?
That would be another covenant under the lease agreement. So, if there was a finding by the township that the WPP was not maintaining the structure in accordance with its requirements under the lease agreement, then yes, they would tend to be in breach of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other commissioner comments? Any staff comment to the motion on the floor?
Madam President, if I may, I know that there's been, staff has made comments to the board, again, in regards to the lease agreement. From staff, we are not in favor of the agreement based on the terms and conditions of that. However, if it is the will of the board to move forward with this, we will support the WPP in their mission of what they're looking to do.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? Good evening again.
Good evening again. Chris Campbell, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Board. Our board met June 13th at your request and at a normal meeting to review the lease agreement, the changes that WPP had requested to that lease agreement. And we continue to have concerns that we feel should be addressed and put the township and the residents and the taxpayers at risk. We're concerned that WPP is a private group without the requisite experience to oversee major construction projects on the property or to administer the innovative educational programs that they say they're going to run. We're concerned that apparently they've raised no money in a year since the first lease was signed. We're concerned that now they want to go from a 10-year lease to a 25-year lease, not 15, not 17, not 20, but 25 years, plus an automatic renewal for three years, as well as have 24/7/365 access to that property. The township, we're concerned, has no rights to cancel this lease, but this organization can walk away at any time with a 120-day notice. We're concerned that no details about how residents will benefit or the availability and cost to use of the, of the facility for the residents has been put in the lease agreements. We're confirmed, we're concerned that 25 major events a year will, will occur on. We're confirmed, we're concerned that 25 major events a year will, will occur on the nicest days of the year, in the year that the park will be getting the most used by its residents, or should be getting its most used by its residents. We're concerned that they can ask for more funding from the, from the township for operating expenses if they're not up to speed in a certain period of time. That's in this lease agreements, and that will not be unreasonably denied. We're concerned that they want the township to continue to maintain the property with regard to mowing and leaf removal, landscaping, things like that. And lastly, we're concerned that the emergency communications issue has not been addressed by this board, and that we're going to invite more people to our park when we've had presentations made to this board indicating that we're at risk of emergency issues up there. So therefore, we do not support the lease agreements and the revisions as currently written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Bill Remfrey, Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Board. For a living, I deal with these leases every day. I interpret them, I recommend clients accepting them, not accepting them, I litigate them. Things go wrong, this is where we come. Unfortunately, this is not a lease which is favorable to the township. This lease is lacking in standard insurance provisions, it's lacking in its indemnification provision quality. It reads like a family document that a father and son would read in exchange, not an arms-length transaction. That's concerning to me. If presented with this lease, I would never recommend a property-owning client of mine sign it. It is detrimental to the township and does not discharge the duties that the board has to protect assets. My biggest concern, why I came here and sat here and am raising the issue, is my concern is about public access. This mansion is owned by the residents. It has been maintained for hundreds, perhaps millions of dollars over the years by residents. $1.8 million of township money from the residents is going to fund and subsidize this project. The risk, if this thing falls apart, if the WPP, it's actually 180-day notice, walks away, the residents will have to complete the project. There's another $1.5 million of expenses which are the lease caps, plus other expenses. For all of that risk, there's not one minute of time guaranteed for the public to use this mansion, not a minute. There's 24/7/365 access granted to the WPP, but not a minute of public access. I'm encouraged by the website beta version we saw, and similar to Commissioner Abel, these are well-meaning folks, and I commend everyone in the WPP for their efforts, and I know they're well-intended. But we all know that sometimes things can go wrong and don't go as planned. And one of the things I'm concerned with is that we heard very nice pronouncements tonight about public access. Put it in the lease. There's nothing in this lease that allows the public to use this mansion. I get these folks are raising a lot of money, putting a lot of effort into it. They should have the right to use it. They should have the right to have private events and close it off in the public. But not one minute in 28 years for the public is reserved in this document. One of the things I'm proud about as a resident of this township is that this board has the wisdom to invest in parks and public spaces. Matt, Radnor Memorial Library, we bailed out that, it's a great investment. Clem McCrone, all the parks we go across to, Anki. This turns that whole dynamic upside down. It takes a public asset and gives it to a connected few. It does not guarantee access for the public, and I would implore this board to at least include something in this lease which guarantees the public some access to this mansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if I may, I just wanted to ask John about that because he's, I guess he didn't, didn't think much of the drafting of this document, and I wanted you to respond to that. But is it, is it true that the public is not guaranteed one minute of access to the, to the building? I, I don't think it says that, but is that, is that what it says? I don't, I'm not sure what this, this lease says.
I mean, first of all, does the public have any access today?
No.
Okay. Let's start with that, because that's probably one of the most important issues. Is there any, and when was the last time the public had access?
It's 2012.
So, I mean, a Park and Rec Board members, with all due respect, giving legal opinions on this particular document, a Park and Rec Board usually doesn't do that, but this, what this says is that their, the purpose of this lease, and they don't have programs to, to put in a lease to say, Monday through Friday, this will be open, because they haven't developed the programs yet. So, how do you put it in here? Especially when you don't have any right now. So, you and I will disagree. I understand you must be an attorney, and there's a lot of disagreement about this, but the lease purpose says to restore the mansion, they claim they're going to do that, you know, time will tell. To maintain and operate community-based programs and events from the lease premises, alleviating the township's burden of restoring, renovating, or preserving the lease premises, which nobody's been doing for, how long? Seven years. Provide innovative educational programs for all age groups, and to make the lease premises available for community and fundraising events that support the preservation of the lease premises as a historic community resource for generations of Radnor residents. That's their purpose. It's not not to give it to the township residents or give them access, but how do you put that in here? I'd really like to know. How do we do a schedule today? Because they're not underway, they don't have a facility that they can even let the public in at this point. We could probably craft some language in here, but until they get up and running, the, once they get up and running, they're going to have to meet with the township, they're going to have to schedule their 25 private events around township activities that currently exist, not in the mansion, because we know there hasn't been any in the mansion for seven years. And then, when the mansion's open, they're going to have to do the same thing. It's going to have to be open to the public. That's throughout the lease document. So, I disagree with the doom and gloom I just heard about how nobody has access and this lease should provide for it. I think it provides for it, but the specifics you're not going to have until they're up and running, the building's improved, the building is, meets the code, which it doesn't.
And so, the other thing is, the very first thing, it says, "WPP is a Section 501(c)(3) Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation providing cultural, educational, recreational, historical, and community-based programs to Radnor residents." If that is the basis of their 501(c)(3), they, if they do not do that, it is for Radnor residents specifically in their 501(c)(3), they will lose that status, and then everything that they are working so hard for will be gone. To me, that is, you know, I'm, I deal in nonprofits, I am, I've been in nonprofit work for almost 30 years. You, you have to abide by your mission in order to keep your 501(c)(3). And if you don't, you will lose that, you will lose all your tax standing, you will lose, you know, whatever money you've raised. I'm sure Evelyn, you even know more what will be lost, you know? And what I have to say about the individuals that are involved in this group, and many of them are here this evening, they are, and I think we all agree, you know, upstanding Radnor residents who have, in many instances beyond this as well, done nothing but work hard for the township and do things for the township, for the betterment of our township. You know, I'm looking at probably every single person sitting back there. And I believe that they would not put their reputations on the line to do a project that is not, first of all, going to do what they say it's going to do, or to be successful. I think that if they did not believe it would be successful, they would not be involved. You know, like I said, these are, these are people who have been involved, they're very visible, they continue to be involved in other things, they have their own businesses. There's a lot riding on this. So, you know, I feel very, you know, confident in this group. It is definitely, you know, it, as John said, there is nothing happening in this building. I actually got an email tonight as we were coming into this meeting from someone who said, "When is the mansion going to be open?" I've gotten several others. People want to be back into that mansion. People want to be able to rent it out for, for things here in the community. We used to do teacher events there, we used to do, those are the kinds of things I think we see happening there, and I think that WPP sees happening there. Not things that are exclusionary, but things that are, you know, I've heard you talk about it being open all the time, people to go up there, read a newspaper, enjoy the scenery, something that isn't happening right now. And, you know, I know the staff has their concerns, you know, it, it is definitely going to be a process, but, you know, I, I thank everyone who has been involved and engaged with this and provided us their, their guidance. It has been the basis for some of the changes that have been made, as I think I wrote back to you guys when you sent us the email. You know, you're not, they're not being ignored, but what else is happening there? Nothing. I mean, if we don't do something, the building is going to fall apart, because I think what we heard, you know, for many years, is that the community does not want it to be given to a school where there is no access, a caterer who will be doing events there, you know, every single weekend, that will definitely limit the access for not just the building, but also for the park space perhaps. So, you know, I will be voting to approve this tonight.
Can I ask just a question? So, other than the 25 events that they're scheduled, the public can use it? I mean, you know, they have, they don't have full access to it, but they're going to be allowed to use it?
Sean, the, the original lease and this lease are, I mean, the 25 events are identical. The 20, their 25 events have to work around existing township activities here. So, that's the purpose of the meeting, actually.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't see this as much different than, say, the, the library, for instance. There are certain rooms that are reserved and you can't use it, and it's not, it's not, it's not public access. I'm sorry.
So, Sean, if I can help to answer this question, because it seems to be...
You just identify yourself.
Tish Long, Board President of the Willows Park Preserve. Thank you all this evening for listening. You've been very patient with us, and we hope that we have success this evening. Basically, we're offering something at the Willows that Stonely does not offer, Appleford does not offer, Greystone does not offer, the Hilltop House does not offer. And the Willows never offered this prior to what we are suggesting. We're going to have a dedicated, open space for residents to come, relax, enjoy themselves with two dedicated public bathrooms. We intend to have volunteers there monitoring the place during that time when it is open, not unlike Shanticleer, it's sort of the, the middle building which also offers hospitality. And that's one thing that we think is going to really generate a lot of community interest. Again, our whole intent is to create a community hub. So, we need this house to be sort of the catalyst to have all of these wonderful programs happen. I know people are concerned about the numbers, and Jake, you're specifically concerned about not having access. I drive by Fairmont Park all the time going into the city, and you see big gangs of people having picnics and whatnot. I'm at the Willows very frequently, as you can imagine, and I see, you know, two teams playing soccer or engaging on that big open place, on that big open field. So, our programming, we're intending will be in conjunction, hopefully, with the school district, with any other local organization, the, when business association, they might want to have an event there or whatever, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts. But we're also intending to have a lot of priv, not private, I shouldn't use that word because everyone will not like that this evening, but smaller events for 15 to 20 people. For instance, Sarah Pilling taking a walk through the arboretum. Mary Ko, I know your interest is certainly in wildflowers, to take a, a wildflower tour. Myself, I'm very horticulturally interested, you know, I'm an event planner, and I've been involved with flowers my entire life, so I intend to be giving workshops there and whatnot. But all these workshops will be, will be open to the public, and so, it's not, we're here because we believe we bring value to the township. We want to do this for the residents. We've had two separate boards unanimously approve the plan that Barton brought forth in 2017 of July, when we had 44 residents here giving what they thought would be the best purpose for this fabulous mansion, this iconic mansion, Charles Barton Keene, and the park. And we believe we've come up with the best solution, and we hope the, we will all embrace it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Barring any additional public comment?
Alex Unopoulos, Ward 7. I just wanted to expand a little bit on what Commissioner Brozowski said and what Solicitor Rice said, that under the worst sort of case scenario under this lease, it seems like the worst that would happen is we would end up where we were two, three years ago with the mansion being exactly as it is now and not having the money. On the other hand, what we do have right now is a group that's raised an awful lot of money and put an awful lot of energy and really enthusiasm to in to not just into, well, into putting together a really wonderful plan that actually has people excited about the Willows again, instead of, well, I guess we'll have to tear it down because it's too much money, which was sort of the attitude that had been there before. And on the other hand, if the, other than the Willows Park Preserve, it's hard to imagine anybody else coming in and doing something better for the township with this wonderful asset. So, I would really hope that this gets approved tonight, because I think it'll be a really wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And John, just to answer, so there is still work, you're working out the insurance, so there are still insurance pieces?
Right.
And you guys have already...
Yeah, that's got to be approved by the township before they get a building permit.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, that is going to be...
I mean, that's, that's an open issue, but, you know, that'll, I, they're probably not going to be ready for a building permit for a couple of months, I would think, or more. So, they've got to provide that information to the township. Township insurance broker will look at that, and then that'll get resolved. That's really the only open issue.
Okay. Is there any additional public comment? All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019-6, 2019-06 adoption, approving a lease agreement between the Township of Radnor and Willows Park Preserve, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion pass... Why are you abstaining?
Because I am. You never asked Rich why he abstained. Your pass is what he said.
The motion passes four to one with one abstention from Commissioner Nagel, and Commissioner Clark absent. All right, moving on. Thank you all. Thank you all very much.
Very much.
Moving on. Ordinance 2019-05 adoption, uh, I'm sorry, 2019-65, amending the 2019 consolidated fee schedule to include a new telecommunications and cable service provider administrative fee. Mr. Zinkowski?
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution that's being proposed, Jennifer, if you want to bring up, Ian, if you've got these, the images. As everyone knows, we have wire issues in the, in the township. You can see there, they are, there's another good sign of the maintenance of those wires here. You can go anywhere in the township and find conditions of wires hanging all over the place. There have been calls to the cable companies, telecommunications companies. It is a response that we have to initiate because they will, it's obvious, they, they don't do anything in a proactive manner, it's all reactive. I know commissioners have spent time also calling these in. This fee actually is to cover the expense of staff time to be able to locate those in. You can see those poles there, the half poles, that have been sitting there for at least several years that have not been removed. Again, a lot of these issues there, that is by St. Catherine's, right between the parking lot and the playground that is coiled on the bottom of the ground. There are many, many of these throughout the township. I think the most famous one we have is on Lancaster Avenue just heading to the east that has not been repaired for over months now of their lines. So, I'd ask the board's consideration to approve this fee. Thank you.
Bob, is the thought that we'd hire a private contractor to go out and correct these problems?
No. This is actually the time to, what we are, is to call these in. You can see that one there, if you can go back, Jennifer, over the pole, they decided to. There was a fight between who was going to remove that part of the pole, so it is now left up there to the cable carriers to do that. This covers staff and administrative time to be able to do this. There is another ordinance that John Rice will be introducing that covers the maintenance of these issues and what penalties that could be served upon these. But this problem, since the last time this was discussed, the board has, has gotten worse, and it continues to get worse. And I know probably from all the commissioners, we've had phone calls from residents or what they've observed, and also the extreme delay in getting roads back open when these, their lines are wrapped... lines are wrapped up in trees.
Has John evaluated this against the public utility laws?
That will be within the ordinance that will be looked at. Again, this one here, I did speak with John on, I'd be more than happy to go to the PUC if, and testify in front of them if they bring this out, because this would be one I'd like to see the PUC rule in favor of those, of those-
We're certainly not the only community.
This, we aren't, but I know, looking at several of our neighboring communities, ours is by far the worst and getting, getting worse. And the problem is, a lot of the coils that we have, given any kind of weather event, they hang down. So, now when you have kids going by, whether they're going to swing on them, we had some actually out front here that we ended up having to remove because the school bus was going to be dropping students off, and that was just an attractive nuisance for them. So, this is one I'd ask the board to consider.
I actually filed a private complaint several years ago with the PUC, and it was just poo-pooed.
I will say that PICO has done a nice job on their, their end of the world with this. It lies with the telecommunications cable internet providers here in the township.
So, I think, I'd like to say thank you to Commissioner Abel for championing this. I know this, this was probably your initiative. My question to you, Bob, is, we can levy fees, or fines, or whatever, but are we just, you know, I mean, are they going to pay for it, or is it just, just, you know, just wasting our time trying to come up with bills, try to expense it, and they're going to say no? Is there any leverage that we could hold against them as well? You know, I know that sometimes we, we owe them money, they owe us money. I just don't want to see us go make these ordinances, and then when we try to collect, it's just, no, we're not going to pay you.
This is a fee. This is a good opportunity to be able to initiate these. In a previous town, in a previous state, we got to the point where the board actually adopted this, and it's amazing how within a short period of time, things changed. However, we've tried to work through with this. The situation continues to get worse, and I think this is one worthy challenge all the way up at the PUC, because this has to change. This cannot continue. And it's a life safety issue, so it's, I believe it sets us in the right, right direction here.
Do other townships do this, levy fees? What's the, when, what has been their success in Pennsylvania or beyond?
In Pennsylvania, I'm not aware of that, but we should lead, not follow.
Fair enough.
Sean, I actually want to piggyback on that, on that thought. Do we have more leverage if we partnered with surrounding townships and all did something? So, if, if you had to go to the PUC, I mean, this is something where we have, you know, it's just not Radnor Township, it's multiple townships coming in with the same issue.
Like a quasi-class action amongst townships to, I got you.
I would like to see us initiate this. We will then, if, if the board would like, we will send this out to our neighboring communities for them to consider this. However, you will have two things coming to you. One is the maintenance ordinance that John Rice will be drafting, as well as your new cable agreement, which some year will be a pa-, will be approved, which I think there will be conditions in there also that make requirements upon them, too.
On this, this fee, it seems to be just a set amount per linear foot. Why wouldn't we write an ordinance that directs, that imposes an expense to these providers that is commensurate with the work that will be done to correct these improper or inadequate maintenance of these lines? And, and wouldn't that be easier to defend in front of the PUC than just a blanket linear foot fee?
Actually, there's, there's two thought processes on this. One is to attempt to recover costs that the township puts out, and actually subsidizing their operations, because there is no proactive actions that they take, so it's all reactive. So, we should be looking to cover the cost. I believe, Rich, your concern will come in the next, in the ordinance that John Rice will be putting forward, which actually has penalties and fines associated with that. And it probably, at that point, is where we will get further into that, that will give us some more weight. My guess is this will be challenged by the PUC, but I think it's good for us to move forward on this and actually take a leadership role on this, because the situation's not getting any better.
Well, I guess it won't be challenged by the PUC, it'll be challenged by these providers at, in front of the PUC. And we're going to, we're going to bring a lot of attention to Radnor, and there are, it's going to create an uproar to just, it's kind of, it seems a little bit arbitrary to impose a linear foot fee on these providers. We have a legitimate issue. They, they, there's improper maintenance. I, I would like to see this directed towards addressing that issue, and the amount of the fee should be based on or commensurate with the cost that we expend, however calculated, to correct that. But just to impose a fee, you're going to put us at the front of, yeah, we're going to lead, but we're going to be in the midst of a legal controversy at the state level. And I don't, I'm not sure I want that attention for, for something like this. I mean, it's a legitimate issue, but I don't know that this is the hill to die on for that.
I guess at some point, you have to make a stand, and I think this is one, that as we get to that level, the board can make that determination. But the situation continues to get worse. And it was based upon recovering of staff time, looking at this. It will be the next phase, because we do not want to be in the business of making the correction, but there should be penalties and fines associated with their lack of response. It'll just be like a property maintenance issue.
Well, so explain to me how this is calculated. It looks to me like it's based on the mileage of roads.
That's correct.
So, I, I don't see where, where directing it at what that administrative expense was and what the correction costs were, and, I mean-
It's our expenses of what we have put in over the last several years, more importantly, over the last year, that we have been tracking this and looking at this, the amount of time that between staff, administrative time, police time, being able to go to that.
I hear you, and I, I believe you, but do we-
That's how, that's how we came up with, with the fee, because if we wanted to go with your, your proposed plan, we will, we could definitely up that fee, which would involve actually making the correction.
Well, I, I think that we should, we need to have some reconciliation of how you got to that number, and, and I'm not questioning all your calculations, but a, a judge is going to look at this and say, this is arbitrary. You're just throwing a number out there. We need to show what that expense was and how you came up with, and you could say, hey, we have $100,000, it's not $62,000. We have 100, we have $120,000 in expense, and we cut it back. But we need to be able to show the PUC and/or other arbiter how you got to that, and some kind of reconciliation. And if it's here, show it to me, because I'm missing it. Just, it's not going to go over well in this, in the state. It's not going to go over well. We're going to make enemies with a lot of businesses, and, and if we don't have, if we don't, if we don't-
I'm not sure, there's only two businesses that would be upset. That's Verizon and Comcast. So, you only have two, and I wish we had this type of furor against Pendot when Pendot was sitting here in front of the room.
I wish we had it against Penn when Penn was in here coming for-
It was Pendot. So, that's public.
I wish we, we had the same when we were talking about the CICD. But, but this, I, I'm not, I don't have a furor against this. I don't have a problem with this, but it needs to be, we need to have a legitimate rational basis that we can show to anyone that says this is how we came to the number, not just miles of state and township roads. Unless, again, maybe I'm missing it in something that's in here? Like, where's the breakdown, and how do you reconcile it?
I think if you read the administrative summary that's in there, I think it spells it out.
Well, show it to me, then. Where, where is it spelled out?
It's in the packet that you received last Wednesday.
I'm looking at the packet right now. Where is it?
Right behind this item.
What page? I, I'm looking at page 215, and it says, revenue calculation, 118 miles of state and township roads, both sides, 237 miles times linear foot, feet per mile, and then times 5% for, per, per foot, $62,000. How does that relate to our administrative expense and our costs?
That's the amount of hours and time that staff has put into this. This does not include my time that's in there, so we could more than happy add that in, too. If you'd like to raise that number up quite, quite a bit more, we could. We felt this is a fair cost that is demonstrative, demonstrative of what staff puts in time on this.
It may be low. It may be, and that's what I, I need, that's what I would like to see. If it's low, it's low, but I think we need to, whatever it is, I'm not, well, I don't have a problem with what this concept is, but, again, how do, how do we come up with that $62,000, and how do we show it? And I don't think, I don't think it's going to get it done just with miles of road.
Any other Commissioner comments?
Yes, so, Bob, Bob, my concern all along has been able to get those clipped wires that just hang. I mean, does that, does this resolution do that?
This part, this goes to that, yes, this addresses the hanging wires, the ones that are, right now, there are many of them, Jake, that are hanging down the poles right now.
So, how does, I mean, my, my question is, how does it address the hanging wires?
This actually now will provide us now to designate specific staff to go around to document where all these are at, and turn in huge lists to this of where all this is at, because just riding through, there are so many of these. So, this would help us recover our costs to be able to report.
Yeah, I have, I have a whole file of pictures on, on these wires.
Does this include, like, double telephone poles, like, when they move the wires and they don't take the pole down?
This would be also, that would be covered into, we will report that those have to come down. PICO does their part, they remove it to the bottom. Last one off the wire, last one off the pole is who pulls them down, and you can see how many that are out there that have not been removed by telecommunications companies.
Bob, I'm sorry, Lisa, were you done? No, no, no. So, instead of using linear foot, I think the best thing to use would be man-hours, I suppose, because you could have linear foot, and, but you're going from place to place to place to place to place, so you have one thing here, one thing here, and you're constantly moving. So, the question is, is, if it's $62,000, I don't know what that would equal at 30 or 40 or whatever we pay some of our public workspeople. I think that if you, that if you build, not based on, and I do have to agree with Rich here, it is a little more subjective, but if you look at man-hours and maybe, you know, materials and gas as opposed to, and, you know, truck and wear and tear as opposed to the linear foot. But needless to say, it's good that we're getting the ball rolling, and at least we're discussing this moving forward, because it is definitely a health, a health hazard. It affects the aesthetic look of Radnor, and I think that affects our property values as well. So, thank you.
Okay. Are there any, any other comment on this? Any additional staff comment? Is there any public comment?
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. My observation, and I'm going to limit it to Garrett Avenue, is this is the process. What we're suffering from is Comcast and Verizon's process. Let's take the student houses on Garrett Avenue. They come in in August, they want to have cable. Whoever, whoever it is, Verizon or Comcast comes and strings a new cable. They use it until May, they pay their final bill, or not. They cancel it. And what Comcast and Verizon does is cut the line at the house, curl it up, and leave it. So, what you really want to do is change their procedural behavior. There really is no reason why they can't cancel the service and leave the wire for the next student who's coming three months later. So, I don't know about the money, but that's what my observation on Garrett Avenue has been, to watch them, because I watch them come and cut the cable and let it all hang down, and then they come back, same house, same connection, they string a new line. At the end of the year, they cut that line, so you end up with a rat's nest. Quite honestly, it looks like Haiti, where I spent 13 years, because that's what happens in Haiti. It does look awful, and it is dangerous, because the kids see it, it's called a nuisance. So, whatever you need to do to get Verizon and Comcast to change their way they operate, it's done. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2019 dash 65, amending the 2019 consolidated fee schedule to include new telecommunications and cable service provider administrative fee, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
I'm sorry, I think I missed a second.
The motion passes five to one with Commissioner Clark absent. All right, ordinance 2019 oh-five adoption, providing for the amendment of the Radnor Township Code of Ordinances by amending Part II, general legislation creating a new Chapter 224, adopting regulations for the planting, controlling, and removal of bamboo, including penalties and other remedies for violations. Can I get a motion to adopt?
So, moved.
Okay. So, right off the bat, I am going to say I have a couple of things I'd like to amend this. I've had numerous residents reach out to me, and I have concerns about this being enacted in the way it is. So, I am proposing that we clarify Section C1 and Section A1, that people need to call the township. This isn't something that people can go have in their hands and knock on their neighbors' doors and say, here's an ordinance, you need to abide by it. It is the township that would be, they need to contact the township, and the township is the one that would be making the contact. The other thing is, I'd like to lower the fine. I think the fine's excessive. I'm thinking 500 or below, but I'm willing to entertain other comments. And then, I'd like to give more leeway when it comes to the bamboo being taken care of. 30 days, if you're told in January you need to take care of your bamboo, how are you going to do that if the ground is frozen or something like that? So, I understand it's a problem. I understand that there are people who are waiting for this, but I'd like to make a motion to amend those, or discuss a lower fine, whatever you guys would like to do.
I'll second that.
You second the whole thing?
Yep.
Lowering the fine to 500?
Yep.
Do you want it lower than 500? Do you want it higher than 500? I'm proposing 500.
500 is great.
Is there a second to the motion? Or did you second it? Oh, I made the motion.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm really tired right now. Okay. So, there is a motion to amend on the floor. Does anyone have any objections? Does anyone have any comments?
Madam President?
Yes.
I just would like to recognize Matt Gullis and the Shade Tree Commission for all their hard work and effort on this, this particular item. I know it's taken a while to get here, but they put a lot of time into it.
Absolutely. And just to let you know, I did speak with Matt around my concerns on this, and they were, these concerns have been precipitated by, by, by my residents who've reached out to me on some of these things. All right, so I'm going to, oh, is there any public comment to, on the motion to amend?
Just one question.
All right, yes.
What part of this is being amended?
So, I want to amend Section C1 and Section A1, and I'd like there to be a clarification that people need to contact the township, and the township will work with property owners. It's not for neighbors to go contact neighbors and say, there's an ordinance and you need to take care of your bamboo, or you, your bamboo needs to go, it's for the township.
So, C1 should have a amendment which basically requires any resident that's aware of this to report it to the township?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think also Section A1, because it addresses that as well.
A1 under Section 224 dash 3?
Yes.
Under violations and penalties?
Where's the bamboo? Yes. It was under the, it was under the violations.
Okay.
Oh, five? I'm sorry, I'm getting to it right now.
Pardon me, Steve?
A1.
A1.
So, each bamboo owner should be responsible, blah, 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 in the event there's any bamboo. The township shall notify. I'd like something in there that says, like, if any, you know, any, like, if people have a complaint about it against their neighbor, they need to notify the township.
Okay. Okay.
Not them notifying their neighbor. I just feel like it's- I just feel like it's... And then amending the fine from 1,000 to 500.
Got that, okay.
And then giving more leeway. So, you know, I'm thinking 60, 90 days? I don't know. I just feel like people need a little more time. Has anyone looked up how you get rid of bamboo? It ain't easy.
So under C, under C2, the 30 days after there's notice, go to 90 days instead of 30 days to correct it.
That would be good.
Got it.
Okay. So we have an amend, an amend, motion to amend on the floor. Any staff comment besides John? Any public comment? All right, I'll call the vote. This is for the amend, the amendments to the ordinance. All those in favor of the amendments to the ordinance, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? You're opposed? You're opposed? You said aye, I'm sorry. Okay, so that motion passes four to one. What part of that are you against?
I think it's, I don't think that you should lower the fine if you're going to need, if our codes guy is going to have to work extra, more. You may need more codes guy, and then that's more use of an arborist to verify the type of bamboo. So I think there's an added cost. But I don't think that we should be, I mean, I'll, I'll speak to it. Again, I don't think that we should be telling people what they can and can't plant. I think that's a slippery slope, and we're going to need a book, yea thick, of what's allowed to, you know, what we're allowed to plant and what we're not allowed to plant. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not, you know, a poppy plant that is opium, it's just bamboo. So I understand some people, neighbors don't want it, but for the township to start getting involved in this, it's a slippery slope on every other type of species that we're going to have to go through and say yea or nay to. I don't see that we have the resources to go around policing it as well.
Okay. So we have the amended version, it was approved, so we are discussing now the amended versions. Sean, those comments were on the amended version, correct?
Yeah. Either.
Either, okay.
The amended version is better than the previous, but it's still more government than, than what I think that we need. This doesn't promote smaller government, this is, this is very hard to enforce. It's more laws on the books. I think it will be used with neighbors carrying it to somebody, even, even if you, even with the changes you suggested. So, and also, I, anybody who gets fined from this is going to complain vociferously. So I, I think we're better off not imposing this at this time and addressing the issue on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Any staff comment? Any public comment? I'll call the vote. All those in favor of ordinance 2019-05, adopting an amendment to the Radnor Township Code by amending Part II, general legislation creating new Chapter 224, adopting regulations for the planting, controlling, and removal of bamboo, including penalties and other remedies for violations, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four to two with Commissioner... Jake, you voted for it. You said aye. I thought I said, okay. So again, motion passes four to two with Commissioner Clark absent. All right, on to ordinance 2019-09, introduction, amending the general code of the Township of Radnor, Chapter 250, Article VI, 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 Street Excavation, Section 250.26, Backfilling and Paving to Require Permittee to Backfill, Restore, and Repair Excavations and Establishing Standards for Such Work. Can I get a motion to introduce? We need a motion to introduce. So I'm sorry. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Rice, Mr. Zankowski, Mr. Norsini.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam President. So Commissioner Abel at the last meeting had asked that we, you know, have a somewhat more stringent patching policy required. So if you go to page two, that's the redlined version. The real crux of it is D, where it says, the previous was when four or more openings have been made within 100 lineal feet of pavement, that's when they would mill and overlay that lane. This says when two or more openings have been made within 500 lineal feet, they've got to do that. So if Utility X comes in and puts a patch here and does another one 480 feet away, they're required to mill and pave the whole lane. Then there's just, I added in about single patches, so that single patches aren't only three feet wide because that makes uneven for when you drive over. So all patches must be the width of the road, so it's a little better for the small single patches. And then that's, the E is just an add-on about what we call a T trench and the actual backfill. So it's for introduction to the board. There you have it.
Okay, any commissioner comment on this?
Steve, Steve, thank you for that explanation. When you say they have to mill and resurface the entire lane, you know, I'll use South Devon as an example. Where would they, so if they open two areas within 400 feet, where, where would they have to repave?
So I, I think if, and I didn't measure it, but I'm going to hazard a guess, if you opened one up at South Devon and Arbordale and another one up at Moshe, you'd probably have to pave that lane. That's probably 500 feet or so.
Oh, so you have to resurface the area in between the two openings?
Correct. So right now, it's four per 100. So what you encounter is...
I've, on South Devon, I counted 22 openings between the top of Morningside and the bottom of Morningside.
So it's not retroactive, but...
I'm just saying, that's more than four.
So what happens is if you get, but it also, it's that 100 feet. So I could do two patches within 10 feet of each other. 150 feet later, I do three more, and I'm still, and the utility's still not catching the 100 feet. This is trying to make sure that we catch, if they do a patch and 450 feet east is another patch from stem to stern, they're going to have to do that single lane once again.
What if it's one utility company opening one, one area, and a second utility company opening in a second area?
So each road opening permit is per the utility. So Pico comes in for one, Pico Gas comes in for utility, Pico Electric comes in for a highway occupancy permit as well as Verizon or anybody else. So it's per utility.
Since the President is off the dais, I'm going to jump in. If there is any staff comment on this? Any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That'll work. Measure passes five to nothing with Commissioner Barowski and Commissioner Clark absent. Moving on to Item K. Is there a motion for, well, this is just discussion, so Commissioner Abel?
All right, thank you. As many of you know, there have been three, three crimes committed on the western portion of, of the township. At least two were committed with, with weapons. I'm not sure about the, the bank, but we had two incidents at Wawa, one at, one at the bank, right on the corner. So speaking with residents, you know, they're concerned about the safety. You know, that's a neighborhood area where neighbor, where young kids are utilizing, they're walking, and they're concerned about letting their kids or even themselves go into these businesses anymore. So, you know, one way, well, I really see three options. We could do nothing, which I don't think is, is the right thing to do. We could add police force, you know, we could add additional police officers to the force to help mon, increase patrols in the area, and I don't see an appetite for that on this board. And so a third option would be to give the police department more tools to monitor the area and, and put a security camera above the parking area on Morse and Sugar Town. And, you know, the neighbors are supportive of it. We heard from a neighbor this evening who supported the idea. And I'd like to get a, you know, kind of the views of the board, and if there's support, bring it for a motion if we need to at the next meeting.
So I'd like to hear from Superintendent Flanagan on this? If that's all right, or yes? No?
Yes, ma'am, the, we've spoken to Commissioner Abel, and I definitely respect the feelings of himself and the members of the ward. The Radnor Police Department, along with the manager's officer, briefed significantly by their concerns, and the three major incidents that occurred there are, are, you know, concerning, very specifically, and go right to the core of how people feel about the community. There are many things that we can take a look at. There's long-term and short-term strategies. In reference to cameras, we do support cameras. I did speak to Mr. White and Mr. Zankowski today just about taking a look at a long-term strategy that would include all of the major things that we would want to take a look at in the township-wide, basically border to border to make sure we're including them, such as as we do new park improvements, we want to add cameras to the parks, SEPTA adds cameras to certain new stations when they do a rebuild. So those type, that type of long-range planning is very important so that we capture as many areas as possible. And there are short-term strategies of placing a camera. There are some things we would need to look at. We did do an Internet-based camera right here at Brookside, and it has assisted in some investigations. So Commissioner Abel's completely correct that video capturing can be done. There is equipment related to that, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Z, we'd have to take a look at the total cost. Obviously, cameras are way more inexpensive than police officers. I would, at some point in time, like to give the board some type of staffing study with an implementation plan of an anti-crime team as well. But we're able to do all of those things, we just have to get direction from yourselves, the manager, and make sure that we have the budget funding for it, and we're happy to do any of them. And again, I acknowledge the community's feeling and Commissioner Abel's drive to want to make sure his area is protected.
Does anyone have any comments on this?
Sure.
With regards to discussion, I mean...
Well, cameras are great for solving crimes, but they don't prevent crimes. So to the extent that people don't feel safe going out in their neighborhood, I don't see the benefit of the camera. And in fact, the three crimes you spoke about were all captured on camera. So I don't see the benefit personally.
What I can say is that all of, all tools come together to help solve crimes. The cameras that we would be putting in would be post-event. We would, we would capture data from them, attempt to use facial recognition, pick up a vehicle, and it has solved crimes. So every tool that we have at our, in our toolbox can help solve a crime, but there are certain things that are more passive or more active. This would not be actively monitored, it would be a secondary to an event.
So when I look at some of these, these pictures, I mean, I have actually four points, piggybacking on what Commissioner Nagel said. Yeah, I don't think they, they stop crimes. I mean, my wife works for Mainline Health, and there is a huge, a $400,000 theft out of the hospital of some medical device. And they had these, they had these people, like, pictures dead on, and it was still so grainy that you couldn't even make out who these people look like. So sometimes they work, sometimes they don't. If they're extremely high up, by the time you would even know about something, they're probably long gone. So you're not going to get good facial recognition, would be my guess, or a license plate or something along those lines. I see this as being reactive versus proactive, so I would lead it to you, Superintendent, to look into the future and say, what can we do to be more proactive? As John said, a lot of these private businesses have cameras. So I don't necessarily know that it's the township's job to put cameras unless we're protecting a certain entity of our own, like, for instance, we have cameras on top of some of our comfort stations to make sure that nothing gets, gets stolen. But when you look in the area, you have private businesses in that area. You have an apartment, potentially an apartment complex. It borders a different township and a different county. So, you know, I think that there could be some kind of, I don't want to say privacy issues, but I think it's just too much Big Brother. If we were protecting a specific asset, like the township building, like the place where, say, the school board, and we're not the school board, but where they store their buses or we keep our public works cars, that makes more sense. But if we do it here, everywhere there is a crime or two or three crimes, I feel the need that we would have to have a camera. Basically, eventually, we're going to have, there's a crime that's happened somewhere on some street. So when you have two or three of them, we'd have cameras all over the township, and I'm not comfortable with that. It's just too Big Brother-ish for me. So I appreciate the concern of your residents, but I, I can't support this.
So I would just say, so we, there is no motion on the floor to support. You know, I would rather, I would like to understand how, what the cost is and, you know, all that. I'm not, you know, trying to mitigate the resident concerns or anything. What I'd like to not do is have a whole discussion about something and then find out we don't have the money to do it. So I think we should understand what the cost is, understand exactly where they would be installed, how they might, I mean, I'm all for giving the police all the tools they need to protect our residents and, you know. But I would just, I would, I think we need to know, understand what the costs are. I don't want to create any false hopes for residents who are feeling fearful or anything like that. Which is why, you know, I wouldn't recommend a motion tonight. I think we need to have all the facts before we do that.
Sure, but in the interest of time and the board's time, if it's something that you don't think that you're going to support, if your opinion's still open, absolutely, get costs, ask more questions. If it's something that you don't think you should, you're going to support, let's just move on to something else. So I'm not going to speak for you, I just, I don't know where your thinking is.
I'm going to say that I can't, I don't know...
So you don't know where you are at this point?
I don't know what I would or would not support because I don't know what it looks like.
Okay, so you need more information, that's fine. Okay.
And Sean, I'm just going to respond to the proactive versus reactive. Yeah, I don't think this is reactive, you know, this is a conversation I've had in the past about, you know, Delaware County. If you go down there and look at their emergency community center, service center, they've got cameras where they can just plug in and see what's going on. I think the chief just talked about, that's something that he's interested in. So this camera, I mean, while it's one-off at this point, would be able to fit into his integrated system if that's what this board or future board decides to do. So, you know, I, I knew where the chief stood on this, and I think, you know, I'm trying to do something that fits into a long-term strategy.
And I understand and I respect you and, you know, the thought process behind your neighbors' issues. I just feel, for me, it's just more of a Big Brother issue, and...
Yeah, I mean, I understand, and people have concerns about always being on camera.
We live in a, we live in a camera-lay society. I get it, if I walk into a Wawa, I am, I, you know, that's their right, I'm in private property. I just feel a little bit differently. Why is there a camera here but not in my ward? And I don't know what, kind of like the bamboo. I don't know what, where the slippery slope, where it leads to. And I just don't want to be, it may come about, we may have cameras all over the place. I'm just not comfortable with it at this point.
And the other, the other comment that was made, that this camera's not going to solve a crime and, or not going to prevent a crime. I don't know that I agree with that. Cameras, you know, some people who commit crimes aren't the smartest people, and they're doing things out of opportunity. If they see a camera, it may act as a deterrent. So I do see some value at the moment and not just as an investigative, investigative tool.
Okay, so in the interest of the fact that we only have five minutes left, and is it, I mean, I know, I see on here possible motion of cameras. I mean, is it okay to ask that we have more information in order to make a motion, or?
Yeah, sure.
Is that, is that all right? Chief, is that, is that something like, you know, if we, we can gather more information about cost and where they would go, and that kind of thing?
I think the answer is yes to both of them, but one's a short-term solution to what Commissioner Abel's talking about. We have limited cameras that we have currently in the township. We know generically what their costs are. We've specked out different ones and tried some, some testing to see what they would capture, what they wouldn't capture. So license plate versus general is a real quick example, so we can look at that on the short term. The long term, you know, I'd like to meet with Mr. Zinkowski and Mr. White, and brief the commissioners on what we mean from license plate readers that could be out, to cameras in different key points, strategize on what are key points and what we want to monitor, and what those goals are, and then, you know, basically back out of a cost from there. Because each time something gets bigger, it costs more, and there's a monitoring component. And those are some of the things that we want to talk about, and also integrating with the county system. And I'll be brief. They will pick up feed, live feed information, so that if there is an emergency or at least a 911 call to that area, the county dispatchers can zone in on that if we ship it up to them. It's a project they started basically a year ago. And I'll, I want to be short because of the timeline.
All right, so we can gather all that information, you can assess what you need to assess, and come back to us with something that's a little more specific, that then, you know, we can actually react to without having to, you know, hypothesize or assume, so.
Yes, ma'am. And just since the community's watching, I'd like to, we'll get with Mr. Abel and Mr. Zinkowski, and if there's anything short-term unrelated to cameras that we can do to help the ward out during this time and their feelings, let's have that discussion, like tomorrow, and see what, if we can come up with some ideas as well.
Okay, sounds good. All right, three minutes. So we still need to, we still have-
I just, I just need one minute.
I know, but we still have item, so we have to, we have to act on item J, Resolution 2019-58, that was left from the consent agenda, 501 South Ithyn final minor subdivision plan. They are on clock, correct?
That's correct, ma'am.
So we need to act on that. The applicant is not here and has not attended, so.
So, Madam President, this is where 528 Brandon Mead Place conveys 0.249 acres from their rear property, the rear property of South Ithyn Avenue. They're asking for the same waiver that the other applicant did, and if you wish to make that a condition of approval, that they do the, a Google Earth or GIS map showing the 500-foot surrounding. There is an existing non-conformity the applicant wishes to continue, that being that every lot shall have a lot area of not less than one acre. 501 South Ithyn is currently 0.588 acres and will be 0.837 acres after the lot line adjustment. This is an existing non-conformity the applicant wishes to continue.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2019-58?
So moved.
Take a second.
A second.
All right, is there any discussion on this?
So I looked at the schematics, and this backs up to the Blue Route, am I correct?
Blue Route's across the street.
Okay.
So Brandon Mead Place is a cul-de-sac off of Wild Haven Road. 501 South Ithyn is actually on South Ithyn. Their backyard's touched. Brandon Mead Place is up way high. So the Blue Route is across the street.
So are they higher than the Blue Route, or what's the elevation?
528 Brandon Mead Place is, I'm not sure quite where 501 South Ithyn comes in. But this lot is, this is just to make, this is to make the applicant's lot bigger, so it's not getting subdivided or anything.
I would just feel more comfortable if the applicant was here to ask certain questions, too. So I would have a, you know, it's a, it's important for the commissioners to have some kind of dialogue. So if they're not here-
Solicitor, what would they have to do? Deny the application?
You, you got to make a decision one way or another. If you, if you punt, it's automatically approved. You're past, you're going to be beyond the 90 days.
That's what I'm saying. You'd have to deny it. If you don't approve it, you have to deny it.
Yeah. Then if we deny, could they come back, and then we could approve it afterwards, or what's the process?
I mean, technically, they'd have to refile a new application and start the whole process all over again.
But we did review it at our last meeting.
And just, Sean, this, this is the most minor of minor plans, because you're not creating a new lot. You're just taking land from one lot, picking the other lot bigger. It's what I would call a lot line change. It's not even a subdivision of a new building lot. It's about as minor as you can get, but technically, you need to file a subdivision plan, because it then has to be recorded. They have to do new deeds for each of the new lots, which will be a different size. So, I'm not sure there's a, you know, a lot of information you would even be able to get from the landowner if they were here. But if you deny it, they're going to have to start over again.
Okay, any other-
I think that the issue that we talked about was the adding of this property. It still doesn't comply with the zoning requirements of one acre minimum. I think that this was to get additional space so they could do an expansion on the house and be out of the new setback, is what I think is what this was, was going on here.
Correct.
But is there any limitation that's, if they go to expand the house, they'll still need to have a, they'll still have a non-conforming use at that time?
I think that, I think the new lots, Steve, is less non-conforming than it was, right? They're, I mean, they're, they're adding to it. They're reducing the non-conformity.
So the original, the original non-conformity was 0.58 acres. The proposed non-conformity would be 0.837 acres.
Understood, but my issue is that a house expansion on a, on a small lot is just the same as a bigger house on a slightly bigger lot that's too small. So it's, the, the issue is, what is the benefit to the township or detriment to the neighbors and the township from allowing it to occur? And it's a non-con, my question, though, is, won't they need a waiver, when they come to build the expansion of the house, they'll still have a non-conforming use that'll be a waiver for, for the expansion, or will that not be the case?
It's, it's a non-conforming lot, not a non-conforming use. So they're making it, by adding land to the non-conforming lot, they're making it less non-conforming, because it's getting bigger, closer to the one acre, right?
But you're, you're missing what I'm saying, is there, what he's doing is he's pushing the property line back-
Right.
And the setback is now further back, and now he can do an expansion-
Right.
Onto the, on, on the site.
He still has to meet the setback requirements.
And he will meet the setback requirements.
It's just the lot size. It's still non-conforming.
But it's still an oversized house on a small lot. And-
To answer your question-
And the answer, the question is, isn't, when that, when that comes up for approval, is that another sub, land division or settlement, subdivision, land development plan? Or is that just a building permit?
It's a building permit, that's all.
So-
So the benefit is, you'll make one resident very happy if you approve it. And the detriment to the township is, you're getting a, a larger lot than what currently exists. It's less non-conforming, which is always a good thing.
And the, the clock runs out on June 30th, so that a decision has to be made tonight.
But, but less non-conforming is not always a good thing, and we just saw that with Wawa last, last week. Even your own, your, your own opinion was that that was not, not the case.
Well, that it wasn't non-conforming at all.
All right, but, but, but-
It's 11:05. Mr. Booker, if you-
The issue is, and I'll just finish up with this. The point of having the overlay is so that we can see it as commissioners, so we can make that a condition. But once, if it's, if we, if we make it a condition and they approve it, we'll never see it. And I doubt that the staff will want to look at it either. So, I really would like to have, this is another, one of these issues, if we're going to allow people not to comply with our survey of 500 feet, let's just require that they do a Google Maps, so we, we need to be able to see where the property is and what the other, other buildings are. So I, I think, I think we should make that imperative to, we get that every, every plan.
Okay, so Mr. Nocini said that, so we can make that a condition of this approval.
You have to approve or deny.
But, but again, the condition, we won't see it, though, Lisa. The point is that we should be able to see it before we approve it.
Okay, we're not going to see the one we did before. Yeah, that's right. All right. Is there any additional commissioner comment on this? Is there any staff comment? Any public comment on this? All right, I will call the vote. All those in favor of, whoops, what is it? All those in favor of, I'm sorry, Resolution 2919-58, it's 501 South Ithyn, minor final subdivision plan. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six, or five to one with Commissioner Clark absent.
All right, I need one minute.
You have one minute.
The item I had on here, here's the, here's my motion. Move the installation of an electronic overheight vehicle detection system, including electronic photo eyes and interconnected lighted diversion signs, to be installed by the township, at the expense of the township, and maintained by the township, at appropriate locations on King of Pressure Road, on the north and south sides of the Amtrak Bridge, at King of Pressure Road. So what this is, is trying to break the, the logjam that we have on trucks hitting the bridge at King of Pressure Road. Ten days ago, we had another bridge strike, and we have massive numbers of, massive four, five, six-foot and eight-foot signs on both sides of the street, and it still doesn't work. We need to have a, an overheight vehicle detection system, such as the one that was outlined by Superintendent Flanagan last year. And it would have a photo eye beam, and it would be lighted diversion signs some thousand feet or so before the bridge on either side. And the township would maintain it. The logjam right now is that the township, for a variety of reasons, has not wanted to put this system in at its expense, and its maintenance is relying on the other bureaucracies to do it, and they're refusing to do it. In the meantime, we have a genuine safety issue that needs to be addressed. So I'm, I'm calling on this board to vote on the installation of electronic overheight vehicle detection system as specified.
How much does it cost?
We, we had an estimate a year and a half ago of about $100,000. A hundred thousand, 200,000, 300,000. I don't know. What do you think a life is worth if somebody gets killed under that bridge?
Madam President?
Yes.
It is about a half million dollars, but we have not taken any of the action against PennDOT for this. We are, in my opinion, this philosophy, the Bank of Radnor, just come to us and say, well, don't do it, because Radnor will do it eventually. We will assume full liability for anything that happens for this, and we do not have enough insurance to cover that. So, I don't believe the township should move forward with this. I believe the township should take a stronger stance with PennDOT, enforce them, their road, their responsibility, Amtrak responsibility, not Radnor Township's.
Well, we had PennDOT in here. We brought PennDOT, PICO, we had them sit right in front of us, and their representative refused to install the, this equipment. PennDOT does not believe they install traffic devices. They refuse to do it. And in the meantime, we have a genuine safety issue for the constituents, the pedestrians, the people who travel on the roads. We had another bridge strike. We've had over 100 bridge strikes since 2008. It happens once every six weeks. Absolutely, we must do something, and we cannot wait for the bureaucracy from the state to, to do this, when it's a safety issue, and we don't have enough insurance if somebody gets killed walking under that bridge and a truck smashes into them.
That's not our responsibility. We will take it as our responsibility.
Okay, so, hold on a second. So did, so you made a, a motion? Did we get a second on that?
Second.
Okay, is there, I mean, I would, I'm not opposed to this, but I don't know how much it costs. I don't know what it looks like. You said we had a quote before. I've never seen anything. It must have been with the prior board.
No, it wasn't. It was with this board. We, was, there's a, there's a PowerPoint presentation that Chris has shown, and it shows that, it's a photo eye, when, if the, overheight vehicle breaks the photo eye, a lighted sign would, would light up and says, divert.
So I would also be more comfortable if Mr. White was here, because where's, is it, how much is it?
Half a million dollars. We have no budget.
Where's half a million dollars coming from?
I don't know if it's a half a million dollars. We had 100,000, is what we said. But again, the issue is-
There was a hundred thousand per situation where it would have to go. You need at least four of those.
We need two.
Matson Ford, you need one on both sides of King of Pressure and Radnor Chester Road. So that's four, over 100,000. So, and then with the installation, it's going to be a half a million dollars.
Well, the issue is not, so if you're saying that you're concerned about the dollars, I would say-
I'm concerned about where the dollars are coming from.
I'm concerned about the lives of the people and the safety of the people. So, the issue is, will the township take on this responsibility? Will we direct staff to do that, or will we sit and wait for another bureaucracy to do this? That's the issue here at hand. And it's not, it's not a dollar issue.
The most important thing is, it's not going to work. There's still going to be bridges. I mean, I sent Bob a clip out of a paper of a bridge where they installed flashing lights and everything else. The day after they installed it, a truck hit it. So, it's, maybe it'll reduce it, I'll give you that. But then the other thing is, those neighbors that live in these locations are going to have to put up with these flashing lights and klaxons and all this stuff. And to the best of my knowledge, in the 25 years that I've been paying attention, there's never been a fatality there. There've been some close calls. I don't even, has there ever been an injury, Chris?
In reference to the bridge strike, yes, there has been injuries, yes.
Yeah. So, we're not talking about saving lives.
I would, and-
There's a lot of other bridges in this town that get struck, and they would need the same.
We have no other bridge, there's no other bridge in southeastern Pennsylvania that gets struck more than this one.
That's not true.
But, but the fact of it is, that this is something that we have the technology, and we have the money to, to address. I'm asking this board to take the vote. Will you address it, or will you not address it, and let it wait for another bridge strike and for another calamity at that location? So let's vote. Call the question.
Madam President, if I may, just as a footnote to this, that is not true whatsoever. And I guess my frustration goes is when we say things that are not true.
I called the question. Called the question.
You apologized to PennDOT when they're here. You apologized to them and said, we're sorry that you're here. We don't want to catch you off guard. Where's the tough talk against PennDOT when you had him in front of the room? Where's it when you were standing there with Steve and myself at the bridge?
Call the question, Bob. You're out of line. You're out of line on this.
I'm not out of line. I'm actually correct. You, sir, are out of line.
You're out of line. You're out of line.
Gentlemen, gentlemen. Mr. Zinkowski, Mr. Booker, Mr. Booker, please.
PennDOT, I agree with PennDOT. They, PennDOT has said they won't, we can work on PennDOT to reimburse us. PennDOT is not going to do this. In the meantime, we have a genuine condition where accidents occur on a regular basis, and we are aware of it. We need to act on it.
Okay, I would rather, so I will not be supporting this this evening, because I would rather have the information we need in order to make an informed decision, as well as let neighbors know. I mean, are we talking about, if we're talking about flashing lights and noise and all that, people don't even know. We're going to vote on this at 11:15 at night? I am not, I'm not in favor of that.
The issue is not, I'm not asking you to vote on flashing lights. I'm asking you to vote on a system to be installed and maintained by the township.
I don't know what, I don't know what I'm voting on.
It's a system to be installed and maintained by the township, not by PennDOT. That's what the vote is.
We don't know how much it's going to cost. We don't know what it's going to be. I have no idea what it is.
All right, well, then you vote against it.
Okay, so I'm going to-
The vote is that for a system to be installed by the township at township cost, if it's a half a million dollars, a half a million dollars, it's a township cost, it's our responsibility, and that's what I'm asking you to vote on, whether you're going to take that on, or you're going to wait for another bureaucracy to do it. So let's call the question. So let's call the question.
All right, first I need to call for public comment. Staff, any additional staff comment?
Hold on, I mean, I haven't spoken, I, but...
I thought you did.
No, I didn't. And I guess we're not extending the meeting. I think that that 500,000 or whatever could be better used for some other project, and I know Steve Norsini, if you have a, a thought on, I don't know if we could even dig underneath to have a, a larger clearance or something, I just don't want to see good money being thrown after bad when it's probably not going to stop these bridge strikes, and then it's just going to make us more liable. My big thought is that underpass on Conestoga, right by Yang Ming, where I think, what, we changed the light bulb and now we own it? Is that, is that the case, Bob?
Yes, we do have, we are required by PennDOT to replace that.
What do we do, we literally like changed light fixture and now we own it?
We have to, actually, in compliance with legal action that was taken against the township in regards to that, that we have to replace the lighting to meet a PennDOT standard.
Okay, so, I, I, I understand, but I have a tough time supporting it. If there's a better, if there are better alternatives, I think I'd like to hear from Bob or Steve or from PennDOT, but I understand your frustration with all these bridge strikes as well as the safety issue.
There's no better alternatives. PennDOT said, "We'll put up signs," and the signs are up. We need a, we need a vehicle, overheight vehicle detection system that will divert these trucks, and we need to do something, we cannot wait for, for PennDOT.
Is there any additional, any additional commissioner comment? Any staff comment?
Yes, I'm not sure where we're going to get a half million dollars from, we have no budget for that, so I'm not sure where we would pay for that from.
From fund balance. We have a million and a half in fund balance.
We've already violated, we've already gone against that, we suspended that for one year. I guess it would be more valid if there was, I, I just don't understand why we're so, being a cream puff on PennDOT, but we, we are the Bank of Radnor, whatever anybody else says, just go to the township.
Mr. Zinkowski, Mr. Zinkowski, this is...
My final comment on this is...
Please forward the conversation.
We have no money for it, there is no plan of where to get that money from, and also too, there are bigger issues than just one sign, a detection system that will not work. When you see people that continue to drive through there, that system will not work, it's bad money. We have now asked the board to actually shut off that walkway. Commissioner Booker, you were on site, you did not want to shut off the walkway, which I believe is a hazard.
My view is, we have a, we have a commitment to maintain that.
We are not discussing the walkway, there is a motion on the floor.
We have a commitment to maintain that walkway per, per our agreement in 2002, I've seen the paper.
I am going to call, I'm calling for public comment now, is there any public comment? Okay, I'm going to call the, call the vote. All those in favor of the motion made by Commissioner Booker for the township to install a overheight notification, vehicle notifications, vehicle detection system at the King of Pressure Bridge, King of Pressure Road Bridge, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails four to two. Okay, is there any additional business, old business, new business? Okay, any additional public comment?
Sarah Pillings, 29 Garrett Avenue. You began this meeting at 6:30, 6:30, and it is now 11:19. I think it's unconscionable that you only have one meeting in July and one meeting in August. You have way too much to take care of to take the summer off, basically, and I'd like to urge you to seriously consider having two meetings in July and two meetings in August. Those of you who are away on vacation can find a computer, you can do a Zoom meeting. It's no big deal, it's been done before, we're doing it tomorrow night. But for you to basically push this stuff off and off and off, September's going to be a nightmare. And I think you really should seriously discover it. The glory days of Radnor are over, there's too much business to attend to. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We do have two meetings in July. We have a finance meeting and we have a regular meeting. We can do a business at the finance meeting, we've done it before, and we are not permitted to do Zoom meetings or call in or anything, vote that way, the charter doesn't permit it. All right, any additional public comment? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much, good night.